We do have quorum and it is six oh one, so over to you when you're ready. Chair Carr, I believe you're muted.
You can tell Harry that I've got my panel up. I don't have my orange cone, but I'm not going to worry about that for now, so unless he wants. Can you ask him, does he, does he want to remote in and see if he can't get my orange cone up or not?
Just one moment. Here we go, over to you, Chair Carr.
Good evening, everyone. I will now call the public hearing of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one to order. This meeting is convened by electronic means and as such, council members may participate in phone or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on and let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. If council members attending by electronic means lose connection during any portion of this meeting hearing, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which is tweeted out by at Van City Clerk. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional and unceded territories of the Musquegon, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations. Thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible contribution of City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day and most nights to help make our city an incredible place to live, work and play. City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart is absent on civic business. Councillor Carr is the deputy mayor and chairing. Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry. Councillor Fry.
Sorry, present?
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle. Councillor Boyle was here earlier, okay. Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Lai has a leave of absence for civic business for this, for this evening and Councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting, the hearing has quorum. Deputy Mayor Carr.
Thank you. Before we begin, I have a few announcements. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to Mayor and Council. Speakers have five minutes to make comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are residents of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so that you don't miss your turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through online web form at Vancouver.ca backslash public dash hearing dash comments. This link will also be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, only if those represented are also present on the phone or in person and must not be speakers themselves. Speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through slides of your presentation, please say next so that the clerk may advance your slide. I also want to note the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversion and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the resoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, or, two, refuse the application, or, three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. On November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, council completed items one to two, so we will, one and two, sorry, so we will start tonight with item three. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at six P M. As I will be on a leave of absence from seven to eight tonight, P M tonight, we need to select a chair for that portion of the meeting. I'm serving as deputy chair, I mean deputy mayor, but we have, beyond that now, we have to choose a chair. So would a council member like to volunteer to assume the chair's role for this hearing during my absence?
I would be happy to do so.
Yeah, okay, we have one person volunteering. Can you, Councillor Hardwick? Any other volunteers? Okay, um, I just think I'm going to ask if this began by consensus, all those in favor of Councillor Hardwick serving as chair in my absence from seven to eight P M, please say aye.
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 Or say nay? Great, thank you so much, Councillor Hardwick. No problem. So we're going to start with item three, CD one rezoning, eighteen thirty-seven to eighteen sixty-three East Eleventh Avenue and twenty-six thirty-one to twenty-six eighty-five Victoria Drive. Does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on item three? So I'm hearing none. The clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Granville Woodland Limited Partnership to rezonate eighty-three seven to eighteen sixty-three East Eleventh Avenue and twenty-six thirty-one to twenty-six eighty-five Victoria Drive from residential district to comprehensive development district to permit the development of a six-story residential building and the retention and conservation of a designated heritage building consisting of hundred thirty-six secured market rental units a high twenty point five meter and a force base ratio of two point eight seven are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set on the summary recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received, as referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list, and we see public comments. Twelve pieces correspondence support, one piece of correspondence in opposition, and three pieces of correspondence in dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M today.
Great, thanks you so much. Just to make sure everybody's aware of, in the public, about speaking. Anyone who wishes to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We do have speakers registered for this item, I believe that there are right now, this item three speakers registered. We have Kent McDougall, rezoning planner of the Resoning Centre Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, here to present the application. You can, of course, council move to wave the application, but, or sorry, the presentation, but we do have speakers, so I'm going to, unless somebody moves that, I'll suggest we proceed with the presentation. Great, go ahead, Kent McDougall.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Kent McDougall and I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application. This application is for a six-story secured rental building with the retention and relocation of a heritage house on site. Site outlined in red is located at the northwest corner of East Eleventh Avenue and Victoria Drive. Small north-south lane currently divides the site into two part, legal parcels. It's currently zoned R M four, allowing for a variety of multiple dwelling types and is developed with eight detached residential buildings containing nineteen rental units. The surrounding zoning is predominantly R M four as well and consists of single detached and multifamily residential buildings generally up to three and a half to four stories. If we move to the next slide. Just to the northwest of the site is a five-story office building highlighted in blue and to the northeast is the Immigrant Services Society Welcome Center at six stories highlighted in purple. Site is located in proximity to a number of parks, community centers, childcare facilities and schools and falls within the catchment areas of Lower Secord Elementary and Vancouver Technical Secondary. Site is also within three blocks of one of the region's most significant transit hubs at the Commercial Broadway Skytrain Station. There is a heritage building on site known as the Carme Residence. The building was built in nineteen ten and is designated on the Vancouver Heritage Register. This application is being considered under the Granville Woodland Community Plan, with this site being located within the Commercial Broadway Station precinct area. More specifically, the site falls within the station residential subarea of the station precinct where the plan envisions a mix of six to ten story apartments which achieve affordable housing objectives along with public realm improvements. Under the plan, for a one hundred percent secured rental housing, up to six stories and two point four F S R can be considered. Plan also encourages heritage retention, providing direction to use tools and incentives available through citywide policies to protect heritage resources. applicable citywide heritage policies state that rezoning should not result in demolition or severe alteration of a heritage building. Invariances, relaxations and other discretionary approvals for development, including bonus density, are the most common form of incentives provided in exchange for its protection and conservation. Site is also subject to the Granville Woodland Community Plan pace of change policy, which limits applications involving demolition of existing rental housing covered by the rental housing stock official development plan to no more than five sites in the first three years of the plan. The application is one of the initial five development sites being considered. If council approves this application, the nineteen secondary rental units on site will be replaced with a hundred and thirty-six new secured rental units, representing a net gain of a hundred and seventeen new rental units. For context, staff note that this site previously received council approval to be rezoned to accommodate an eleven-story mixed tenure residential building with the proposed heritage retention and relocation, mixed tenure in this case being a mix of strata titled and rental residential. Prior to enactment, the eleven-story proposal was withdrawn and a new six-story secured rental application was submitted. During the enactment process for the previous approval, the designation of the heritage house was completed. Current proposal submitted in September of two thousand and twenty is to rezon the site to permit the six-story secured rental building and the retention, relocation and refurbishing of the heritage building on site. The proposal includes a hundred and thirty-six secured rental units with thirty-six percent of the units being family oriented with two or more bedrooms, a density of two point eight nine, F S R is proposed, building height of sixty-seven feet, ground level indoor and outdoor amenity spaces at the front and rear of the building and one level of underground parking accessed from the rear lane. This project will create approximately four hundred and seventy-six new onsite and offsite jobs. To accommodate the redevelopment, the heritage building located on site, which is highlighted in orange, is to be relocated to the northwest corner of the site fronting Victoria Drive, highlighted in green. A rezoning information site sign was installed on site and postcards were distributed within the area. A virtual open house was held in January on the city's Shape Your City platform and a total of fifty-six submissions were received. Generally, comments of support noted the building height, massing and density being appropriate given proximity to transit, support for more rental housing, the building being well-designed and support for the restoration and retention of onsite heritage building. Generally, comments of concern noted the height, massing and density, affordability, a reduction in proposed family-oriented units from the previous application and insufficient parking. Proposal was presented to the city's urban design panel in February of two thousand and twenty-one, where the panel supported it with recommendations to improve the design and neighborhood fit. The proposal was also presented to the Vancouver Heritage Commission in April of two thousand and twenty-one, which supported the proposal with recommendation, recommendations to improve the relationship between the six-story building and the retained heritage building. In response to the feedback received, staff note that the proposal generally complies with the plan and heritage policies in terms of housing tenure, building height, density and heritage retention. Parking is to be provided in accordance with the parking bylaw and the housing mix proposed is in alignment with the city's family room requirements. However, staff have included a rezoning condition encouraging a broader mix of unit types. As well, rezoning conditions seek to refine the building design, explore the inclusion of rooftop amenity space and improve the overall neighborhood fit. A minor reduction in density from two point eight nine F S R to two point eight seven F S R is recommended to improve the design relationship between the heritage and six-story rental buildings. If we move to the next slide. The area, the proposed reduction in F S R is highlighted in red. Proposal includes almost three million dollars in public benefits, including the retention and restoration of the onsite heritage building at approximately seven hundred thousand dollars and approximately two point three million in estimated development cost levies. In conclusion, the application is generally consistent with the Granville Woodland Community Plan and heritage policies and the project will deliver a hundred and thirty-six new units of secured market rental housing towards the goals of the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff support the application subject to conditions of approval on an appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Chair Carr, I.
Thank you very much. I'm wondering if the applicant, sorry, if the applicant team is here to speak to the application.
Hi, Councillor Carr and other councillors, it's Evan Alagretto again from Intercorp. Thanks for having us. I'm here with David Wu and then Stanley from R W A, our architect. We're here for questions. The one thing I just wanted to point out, which Kent did a really good job, is that this application originally was approved for eleven-story condo strata mixed-use project. We tried to make that work, but unfortunately, the economics, trying to make the rental work in the condo form of development was just too burdensome on the costs, so we've elected to work in a wood frame construction opportunity. That's all I have to add and thank you for your consideration and we're here for questions.
Great, thank you. And there are questions. I'm not sure if they're for staff or you, but I'm going to proceed with those questions. Councillor Kirby Young, you are first on the list.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I will ask a question to the applicant because this is our opportunity to do that. And I wonder, Evan, if I can just follow up on your comments with respect to the eleven-story, when you said the eleven-story was mixed-use, was that going to be mixed-use strata and rental tenure?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, the Granville Woodlands plan is fifty-fifty condo and, and fifty percent rental.
Okay, and because it was eleven stories, it was in a concrete forum and it was the rental and the cost of construction. I wonder if you can elaborate a little bit, that didn't make it viable. I'm curious about that because I'm actually quite interested to see projects that can enable mixed tenure, so love to get a bit more perspective on that.
Yeah, I mean, the, like, you know, I've kind of vocalized this with council and staff before. The cost to deliver rental in a concrete forum is dramatically higher than in wood frame. So you need to provide about three or four times the amount of rental density in a concrete form of development. So I think, if I remember off the top of my head, it was one point eight F S R rental and one point eight F S R condo at the time. To make it, to make rental viable at the same pace as condo, you need about three times the density, so you would need equivalent to almost four F S R in rental for the one point eight, or maybe more than four F S R, so that, we tried to make it work. We did everything in our power to try to do it, but we just couldn't, you know, gain interest in people owning the rental component when it's shared with condos and then the costs were really high. So we did what we could, but we eventually realized that we needed to reduce the density and go with the wood frame form of development, which actually at the end of the day results in more secured rental housing. It went from seventy-two units to a hundred and thirty-six homes.
Okay, so follow up on that then. At the time, was mass timber not viable or is not as much of a discussion, or is it just also financially?
Um, yeah.
Completely not practical, or that, was that not an option?
That was four years ago, so mass timber construction has moved a long, a long way since then. I would say that, you know, four years ago, mass timber was more expensive to build than concrete. Now it's kind of getting closer to the cost of concrete costs in our view. And, you know, I think it's probably another five or ten years until mass timber is viable, where it, you know, it supports the rental, you know, costs are lower so that it supports rental, mostly because, you know, the trades in Vancouver, there's just not a big enough trade, amount of trades that know how to do it. And then the manufacturing facilities that really bring down your costs have not been, they're in process of being delivered. So it just, there just needs time to, you know, get the manufacturing facility so that the costs go down and then the trades to actually deliver it, so. I'm, it's, it's in the near term, but not soon enough.
So a little bit kind of interdependency there, a bit cart and horse. Okay, that's really helpful context. And then with the heritage house restoration, is that also available as a rental unit or what's the?
Yeah, they're all rental. Everything's rental in this application.
Okay.
There, there's four units built into the heritage house, so there's, call it two townhouse-like units that are street-fronting and then there's two flats underneath. The heritage house is raised up slightly.
Okay, great. I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, but you do have, or there are more questions, so I'm just going to move on. Thank you, Councillor Kirby Young. On to Councillor Weeb. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, and thanks, Kirby Young, for asking one of my questions. My next question is on the roof and the amenity space. It's talked in the report, there is a hope for amenity space on the roof and a, not a condition, but an opportunity to create a green roof. Can you talk as an applicant or the city where those conversations at and what is the opportunity to create a green roof on this project?
I mean, the, the green roof is pretty easy. We would probably, we're, well, we would, we would do it. So that's, that's, that's an easy condition to meet. The amenity, the, like, the indoor amenity is tough in a six-story building because when you go to this, when you create indoor space on the, on the seventh floor on the roof, it then goes into a higher building standards, which is like concrete, so the fire rating is different. So what we're, we're exploring that, the industry is exploring that. I think even City of Vancouver staff are exploring that to have kind of an alternative solution for indoor amenity on the roof. But right now, until we resolve that, we will, the roof is designed as an outdoor amenity with like green components, so urban agriculture and then a lot of green vegetation.
And that's as currently planned?
Yes, it is planned that way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ah, thanks. Councillor Weeb, Councillor De Genova, over to you for five.
Thanks so much for the explanation, Evan, on the, on your choice to revise your project and your application. I'm wondering if, if you might be able to share if you feel that you've been able to maximize affordability. I understand that this, looking at it, meets many of our policies, this is outlined in the report, but do you feel that you've been able to meet maximum affordability within this policy for Granville Woodlands and the housing, considering the constraints you talked about with concrete, mass timber?
Yeah.
I mean, for few trades, sort of, it's almost like lead in its very beginning days, I suppose. That's what I've heard, but I'm just wondering, do you, are there other ways you would, you would have seen this being, becoming more affordable?
The best way was, I think you were in council, Councillor De Genova, when the original Granville Woodlands plan that was drafted by staff came to council, I think it was the first draft, when there was just, I think this neighborhood, the average tower height was around twenty to twenty-five stories. With that type of density in a rental component, kind of like what I was speaking to before, there would be a lot more opportunities to put in non-market housing because the existing land for the single-family homes that were there previously would be quite a bit lower than the rezoned, rezoned use, so like kind of the C A C negotiation. So we, you know, in this situation where the density is not that high and we worked with the real estate department, there isn't really any opportunities to reduce any, create any more affordability based on the economics. It's already really tight to deliver it as is.
I, I appreciate that and understand that, so just to make sure that I'm clear, what you're saying is with economies of scale, this could have, like, you could have worked on concrete rental, as you'd mentioned in answering my colleague's question, but in this particular situation, you didn't have that economy of scale to work with, so that's why you decided to go back to the drawing board, correct?
Correct, exactly.
Thanks so much, really appreciate that. And can I just ask also, I understand that, that there's a D C L that may go towards childcare. I mean, really, it goes into the, the, the pool for D C Ls here, but have staff given you any indication as to what that D C L would be used for?
I do not know, sorry.
Um, I, I might ask staff later on. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Councillor De Genova. Councillor Swanson. Counselor Swanson, up to five for you.
Yeah, thanks to the applicant. What do you anticipate low park rents will be?
They will be market rents. They are, can't remember off the top of my head, but we would be, we, we were reviewing, doing the DCL waiver. So I would say, if you're familiar with the DCL waiver rates, we're, we're in and around then, in and around there. The reason why we didn't apply for the DCL rate, waiver rates, is we have some studios here that we, we consider that as one-bedrooms, but the City of Vancouver doesn't consider them one-bedrooms, because the bedroom is not with a window. So the, so we wouldn't be able to comply to the DCL waiver based on those unit types. So I'd say around the DCL waiver rates.
And it says in the report that you're going to offer the 19 current tenants the right of first refusal at 20% below market? Is that accurate?
That's the, the original relocation plan. All the tenants, I believe, except two have left, and we will reconnect with them again in the future.
So are there going to be 19 tenants getting an offer of the right of first refusal at 20% below market?
That's, that's, yeah, that's the plan. We've got their contact information. We have to contact them.
Yeah, so they could, when the building is done, they could return at 20% below market?
Correct.
Okay. Are you going to have EV charging?
Yes. Don't, I don't know it on the top of my head, but we do, the building, because we're looking for TDM requirements, that has a, and, or energy vehicle requirement.
TDM, meaning?
Transportation Demand Management, so we're reducing the parking requirements, but we're going to have more electric vehicle opportunities there. We'll probably also put in conduit to all the stalls, so that as people drive more and more as electric vehicles, we can have more opportunities to energize the stalls in the future.
And will it be a pet-friendly building?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson. Those are the questions from council. So we are now going to turn to hearing from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please be prepared to come forward. So we do have speakers available to provide comments on this item. My understanding is that, Clark, I wonder if you could let me know if the first speaker, Alistair Wood, is on the line?
Yes.
Good evening.
Yeah, Alistair Wood, is that you?
Yes, good evening, council. Sorry, I, this is my first council meeting.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So, good evening, council. I'm a resident of one of the properties at Victoria Drive, at this, where this development will be taking place. I've lived here for the last two years, and in East Vancouver for three years total. I wanted to take the opportunity to voice my support for the development happening here, and as I believe that purpose-built rentals are sorely needed in this area. I also want to note that our property managers, the Tierra, have been fair and cooperative during a stressful time for us, where we're being displaced from where we live. My main reason for speaking is to note that several of the homes that appear to be slated for demolition are actually not much younger than the heritage home being retained on the property. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Homes such as 1843 East 11th is built in 1911. 1849 East 11th is built in 1927. 2643 Victoria Drive, Victoria Drive is built in 1912. And then 2631 Victoria Drive, built in 1931. Although age is obviously not just one character-defining feature, a lot of these properties are also kind of beyond repair or restoration, in some ways potentially. I think that a lot of these properties could be considered for deconstruction, at the very least, and that some consideration could even be put towards implementing these materials into the new development. I know this might be more relevant later in the process, I just thought it would be important to bring it to council's attention. And yeah, while the City of Vancouver only requires deconstruction for homes older than 1910, or the Heritage Division, I think that many of these homes are just slightly younger than this cutoff date. I think it should be noted that only one of the homes, I believe only one of the homes is, was built after 1931, it's currently being demolished. So there's a lot of history here, other than the one heritage home being retained, that we'd be losing with, with the advancement of this development. All that being said, I, I do support the development, and I, and I think that a lot of these homes, mine included, are quite, quite old, and quite, they've kind of come into disrepair, but I just thought this was an important thing to bring forward. So yeah, thanks so much for your time.
And thank you for taking the time to speak to council. Very much appreciate that and your thoughtful comments. There aren't any questions, but again, very much appreciate you, you speaking. Clerk, is speaker two on the line? Adam Davison.
Chair Carr, no, we do not have speaker number two.
Okay, speaker three, Jean-Guy Trapanier?
Yes. Hello?
Okay, we can, we can hear you clearly. Go ahead, up to five minutes to speak to council.
Oh, all right, good. I was wondering if I was on or not. Okay, I am the former owner of the house 1-857 East 11, the Heritage House, and I would like to just bring forward the technical point. I, I don't think there is a number 1-863 on East 11, but I guess that's just, that's just a detail, right? And the other point I wanted to, another question I would have to the developer, he's talking about four units in my former Heritage House. Is that correct? Or, because I see on the plan that there, there's one unit on the ground floor and two units both in front and the back of the house. Am I, did I hear it properly?
You know, this is not an opportunity, unfortunately, for you to ask questions, but I'm sure one of the councilors would know that, and ask staff afterwards. And so if you keep listening, you'll hear an answer.
All right, okay, good. I, I, I'm phoning in favor of the development. In fact, I'm happy to see that there would be this 136 secured market rental units. I, I read about that, and I think that it would meet the needs that we have for more rentals in Vancouver. I would like to comment also on some comments that I saw with regard to parking, stating that the spaces would be inadequate, but in fact, I think that we would like to, I, my feeling is that it should be to attract tenants who favor using more public transport. In fact, transit is just a couple of blocks away, and also there's the EVO, and there were some electric bicycle on Broadway, I mean, on Victoria. So that, to me, that doesn't cause any, any issue. I am also very happy that the Heritage House is being kept, because this is a property that I got 35 years ago, and I had transformed it into a legal triplex. So to see that these units would still be available, and I'm happy that, I believe I personally would have first shot at renting one of the units in the, in my former house. So I'm quite happy about that. My last comment is about the fact that some people commented that the house would sort of be dwarfed next to the, to the six-story building. But I think that it's, if the coloring outside would be lighter, then, you know, there would be enough light to be reflected on, on walls, and that, that should be a good attraction for the neighborhood to see the type of housing that existed before on East 11. So thank you for listening, Mr. Mayor and council member. I conclude by saying that I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Great, and thank you very much for calling, and there aren't any questions, but we did take note of the questions you did ask, so thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Great. So Clerk, is speaker two on the line?
No.
Okay. Are there any additional speakers on the line?
No.
Okay, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speaker's list. And that phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers, are there any speakers in the council chamber, clerk?
No.
Okay. So that's my first time of calling out. Anyone on the line?
No.
Good, I'll do a second call. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speaker's list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So clerk, are there either any speakers on the line or in council chamber?
No.
Right, I'm going to call a third and final time then. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound. And the phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. And that, I will leave now, or we'll have a break for five minutes, as we wait to see if anyone does call in. Five minutes, council.
The council is currently in a short recess. If anyone currently on the line would like to speak.
There, or Michael? I can see five of you. We don't have Quorum yet. Ah, Jean, thank you. Ah, Mike, thanks. Clerk, I'm, Regina, I'm ready to start again?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's the end of our five minutes, and so I am going to just check to see if there are any other speakers, either in the chamber or on the line.
No.
Okay, so, sorry, seeing that there are no other speakers on the line or in the chamber, then I'm closing the speaker's list. And, yeah, so closing the speaker's list, and then moving on to, sorry, there are different script pages for this compared to regular council. I'm going to waive any, sorry, period for receipt of additional public comments, because we are at the point where we've already called three times. And so we are now at the point of being able to hear closing comments and further questions and making a decision. So does the applicant have any closing comments?
Anything from us, thank you.
You're good? Count, staff, do you have any closing comments?
No comments, thank you.
Pardon, you're not very audible?
Pardon me, no, this is Ken McDougall from rezoning, no comments, thank you.
Okay, just check your mic and any, answering any questions, because you're fairly faint. So council, do you have any questions for staff? See questions? Counselor Degenova, you're first. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
I'll try and keep moving short. Oh, there's others on the speaker's list. I'm also happy to move the motion, but I see that I think there's others on.
There are.
We'll add myself at the bottom after, but I did want to ask, if staff have identified or earmarked where these DCLs would go? I understand, I understand very well what DCLs can go towards, and childcare being one of those options, but can you tell me when these DCLs will actually, I understand that these DCLs, that the developer pays, would be put into one of the many contributions outlined in the report, or would be contributions put towards childcare, several other, I'm really focused on childcare, as you know. So I'm wondering if you, if you can tell me when, when those specific amenities will be delivered to the community, and if you have considered what those will be earmarked for? Thank you.
Sure, thank you for the question. The short answer there for the DCLs, are they allocated in any specific direction? Is, is no. Their estimates? Their estimates at this stage confirmed usually at the development permit stage and collected at building permit stage. So that is a future permitting part, where they would actually be collected. In terms of where they go, they go into that general DCL revenue and are part of the capital planning process. I believe the next capital planning process would be for 2022. And that's where the discussions of those allocations would go. And at that stage, we may not have collected on this one.
Okay, and just wondering, I, I understand that, you know, there are certain things that need to be in the referral reports, policies that this complies with, but also, as is stated in all reports, when, you know, DCLs are a part of the application, it clearly, you know, states that there is a DCL and what that can be used towards. So I'm wondering if you've considered what in, in the, in that list of DCLs, this community and neighborhood might most need?
Counselor D. Genova, it's Jean Fan, senior rezoning planner. Certainly, thanks for that question. In terms of DCLs and the community, we, I guess, the first, the short answer to your question is that the DCLs can go to four buckets. Childcare, as you've mentioned, parks, social housing, as well as engineering infrastructure. And then we would align that through that capital planning process with what's spelled out in the public benefit strategy. And that public benefit strategy takes into consideration the need in the community, and we'll, we try to align it as best as we can to what is the need according to those buckets, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, and that's all from me for now, Chair, I'll just put myself on the end of the list as I said.
Counselor D. Genova. Counselor Weave, over to you for up to five.
Yeah, I guess I have two questions to Staff. First one, is there an opportunity to look at deconstruction for these sites, recognizing the question?
You are breaking up a little bit, Counselor Weave, you might want to check your, your founder's speakers, but Staff, did you hear that question? I think it was about deconstruction.
Could the question be repeated, for the privilege, Counselor Carr?
Yeah, I guess my first question is, talking, listening to the speaker today, is there an ability to look at construction?
Yep, Kent McDougal rezoning, yes, I'd say typically deconstruction and recycling of materials is an aspect, particularly at the development permit stage, that buildings are looked at based on their age, and, and seeing if they qualify, and if they do, they would be, we would be looking to do that.
Perfect, and second one was on the amenity space. What are the options we have in a six-story, it creates rooftop amenity space that increases the wellbeing of the residents of the type of building? And what would be able to be possible for the tower?
In, in this case, on this application, there was the, there was an indoor amenity, two indoor amenities on the first floor, one towards the rear and one towards the front, which is a little smaller. The front has a small patio, and as well, there was a quiet garden proposed in the rear. Through some of the analysis, it appeared that that may be a little tight from an amenity space point of view, and that's where the instruction and encouragement to explore additional outdoor space through a rooftop amenity, not necessarily an indoor amenity room, but outdoor amenity space that would work with a wood frame building, is, is proposed as one of the conditions.
Okay, and do we have rooftop amenities based on seven floors in wood structure buildings, or have those all been cement buildings that come to this council?
I believe they've all been seven story, because the, the, an indoor amenity on that level qualifies as a seventh store, and thus necessitates concrete construction.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thanks Counselor Weave. Counselor Hardwick, over to you for up to five.
I don't have a question, I was gonna speak in support, so.
Okay, if one of just, we're not there yet, we're still in the question queue, Counselor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, same, I'll take myself off, thanks.
Okay, Counselor D. Genova, go ahead.
To keep us moving along, I'm happy to move the motion and speak in support of this.
Okay, we need a second here.
Second, Counselor Kirby Young.
I think Counselor Kirby Young, fine, so go ahead, I'm gonna move us to the main queue. Counselor D. Genova, I'll just get you on that.
Thanks, I can, there.
Yeah, I'm just.
I, I, you, you put me on, I took myself off probably, I'm sorry.
Ah, we did at the same time, Counselor Hardwick, I'm just moving beyond you, but I'll add you, go ahead, Counselor D. Genova.
I'll be brief, but I, I wanted to say that I, I really appreciated the explanation from the applicant, especially as to why the application was revised, and some of the challenges that the applicant faced in not being able to provide affordability with the first application or iteration of the application, due to, you know, the, I suppose, lack of opportunities to move forward with economy of scale. And I, I think that, you know, it's really important to consider that when we're here in public hearing, we have to, we, it's not a time necessarily to consider policy, we can consider policies at a later time. I think it helps to point out some of, you know, the perhaps holes in, in the policies, or I should say gaps or voids, where perhaps council may want to consider those at, at a different time, but we really do, as a quasi judicial body, need to consider the application and the merits of that based on the policies. And I think that it is really important to note that not only has the applicant met those policies here, but I'm also looking forward to some of the amenities, which unfortunately will be planned for the future, but that the DCLs considering the waiver was not opted for, will contribute to the community in the future. So I, I support this, and I'll leave it there.
Great, thank you Counselor D. Genova, Counselor Hardwick.
Yeah, I sit on the Heritage Commission, and we saw this come through some time ago, and there was substantial support for this within the Heritage Commission, so I just wanted to note that. It'd be nice to see this go ahead with the six stories plus the HRA. That's better than what the, the prior application was, and for that reason, I'll support it.
Thanks, Counselor Hardwick. I've seen no one else on the queue, so Clerk, could you move us to a vote on this, please? And that is unanimous. So Council, rather than starting the next item, I have to leave, I mean, my leave of absence is in two and a half minutes. And so I think I'll use this opportunity to actually turn over the chair to Counselor Hardwick. Clerk, I'm assuming you've centered the script, so I'll see you in an hour.
Right, well, hopefully I can hold down the fort. I do have the script here, just give me a second to get caught up to the next item. We are now looking at the number four, which is a CD1 rezoning at 2735 East 41st Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item four? The Clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Barnett Dembark Architects to rezonance 2735 East 41st Avenue from CD1 District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit development of a five-story mixed-use building with commercial space on the ground floor and 32 secured, or current units. A height of 15.5 meter and a floor space ratio of 2.46 are proposed. General manager planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since we flew to public hearing.
Thank you. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 hashtag before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we have Simon J., rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning urban and design and sustainability here to present the application.
Good evening, Mayor Council, can you see my presentation and hear me clearly? Ken?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Simon J., I'm a rezoning planner for this item. Can, Staff are prepared to wave the presentation if Council wishes?
Move to wave the presentation.
Second.
I would love to go for just a verbal on this one. All in favor of waving the staff presentation, say yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Any nays? Hearing none, is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
Yes.
Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team? Please note that this is the only opportunity of council to ask questions of the applicant.
Chair, point of procedure, does the applicant have any comments to make prior to council asking questions?
The applicant team is to speak to the application. Does the applicant wish to speak and on the presentation?
Good evening, Acting Mayor Council, it's Maciej Dembek from Barnett Dembek Architects, can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, good. A fairly modest building, I would say, we're, we've got five stories total. Ground floor commercial is aligned along 41st Avenue. The building pushes to that edge, does terrace back on the rear of the site so that we try to maximize daylight opportunities and minimize overlook onto adjacent properties the rear and the north of this particular site. Right now, the site is a, a large, empty, it's got a very little development in it, it's a store and a half building that's being used by the Gulf and Fraser Credit Union with a parking lot, so it's quite underutilized, and it makes sense to put, to put something of a larger scale and more adequate urban nature in this location. As required by, by all our working with staff, who've been actually very good to be working with, we've been very, we've incorporated sustainability features as required by the city of Vancouver. And it is, as you know, a rental application under the rental program, and we certainly abide by all the rules and whatever we need to for that, and really look forward to working with, with the city and staff to make sure this comes to a good conclusion. And we certainly look forward to, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you for that, and this is the point where if there are any questions from council to staff or the applicant, and I see that we still, we have Counselor D. Genova on the queue, Counselor D. Genova?
I am on the queue, thank you very much. I, I just wanted, I had a question of the applicant, and I was wondering, with the commercial space, do, do you have any idea what type of tenant you may be, are you engaging with any specific type of use? I suppose with, for the commercial space, can you share with us, even if, if not the specific vendor, what that commercial space will be?
We currently do not have any specific plans with regards to commercial space. However, we, as the credit union, we totally understand and appreciate the importance of local retailers and services that would complement the neighborhood, so that would definitely be something important for us.
Okay, so, that's, that, that was going to be my second question. Would you be looking to engage sort of local retailers first?
Yeah, that's, that would be the priority, yeah.
Okay, and, and to look at what the neighborhood perhaps doesn't have that it may need, especially on a sort of transit corridor?
Exactly, yes, as a credit union, we, we are community focused, and going to try to be a complimentary in supporting the credit, the community that we have the fortunate, fortunate ability to be participating in, so it's definitely, yes, we will be.
Thanks, that's all from me for now.
Thank you, Counselor D. Genova, next up is Counselor Swanson.
Yeah, thanks, so is the plan for Gulf and Fraser to have a Gulf and Fraser office on the bottom floor?
Again, it's, at this point, that is part, that is the intent at, however, nothing has been determined concretely at this point in time.
Okay, what do you think that the ballpark rents will be?
For the commercial space?
No, for the residential, sorry.
Oh, they will be in compliance with the DCL waiver.
So, 1,500 for a studio, 18 for one bed?
Right.
Okay. Okay, and there's no current tenants?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you, that's good. Oh, oh, sorry, will there be EV charging?
If I can answer to that, it's the architect here again. Yes, definitely on some stalls, for sure, I mean, it's pretty much standard requirement nowadays, and we'll, we'll be discussing with staff as to what would be a reasonable number in today's sustainability climate, so for sure, yes.
And will it be a pet-friendly building?
A reasonable pets, sure.
No boa constrictors? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson, and I don't see any other questions from council. So we will now hear from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 hashtag before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Clerk? If there are any speakers?
Yes, Chair, Hardwick, we have the speaker, registered speaker number one on the line.
Okay, that appears to be Nathan Davidovich. Nathan, are you there?
Do you hear me?
Yes, can hear you perfectly, please go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, you know, I, I'm a member of GNF Financial Credit Union, so I'm very proud that my credit union is building housing for people, so I'm in support of it. The problems I have is the traffic problem, and the bus problems on 41st Avenue, which I called the staff and they don't know anything about it, because they don't live there, and they don't understand that 41st Avenue east of Victoria Drive is not the same as 41st Avenue west of Victoria Drive. One is four lanes, the other one is six lanes. So we have all kinds of problems there, and the city staff don't want to deal with the problems. That's the, the main problem, you know. If you think the, the rapid bus is faster than the local bus, I've taken both buses from Victoria Drive to Joyce Station, the, the local bus has 13 stops, and the, the rapid bus has five, they both arrive at Joyce Station at the same time. And that, the reason is, of course, because the, the, the street is not designed properly for, to move buses, and there, there are no left-turn bays on both sides of this development. There is two traffic signals, one at 41st and Clarendon, and one at 41st and, and Earl's. And so that's what the problem is, it doesn't matter if the bus is rapid, he can't make it. And that's, that's a good example why the bus stop balancing doesn't even work in this case, because here you have 13 bus stops for one route and five for the other, but it's the same travel time. So, you know, we need to, the staff is not proposing any, any improvement to the traffic or, or anything. So I don't know what, what could be done to improve the, the traffic on 41st from Victoria to Kingsway. So, you know, we just can't, can't ignore the, the problems that exist. So that's about my, my submission.
Thank you very much for that, Nathan, is that it? Thank you very much for that, Nathan, is that it?
Yep.
You don't appear to have any questions, so thank you very much for making the time to address council this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Clerk, are there any other speakers?
No.
There are no other registered speakers. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 hashtag before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream, any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. At this point, Clerk, we're seeing that there are no additional speakers and the list is now closed, is that accurate?
There are no speakers, that was call number one, we need to call two more times.
Are there any other speakers?
That was number, that's number two, let me just check to see if we have any coming through. None, Chair Hardwick, so if you could call a third time?
Are there any other speakers for the third time?
May I ask a point of procedure?
Yes, certainly.
In practice, Chair, we've, we've had a five minute break with virtual meetings to give speakers an opportunity to call in, are we, are we still practicing that?
I'm just looking for that in the script, it is suggested a five minute recess take place to see if any calls have been received on the phone. Or any other speakers have come forward after the call for speakers three times has taken place. So Clerk, on your direction, are we to take then a five minute recess?
That is the recommendation, Chair Hardwick.
Okay, let's do it. So we'll be back at seven. Great, so I believe that we're at the point now. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest, not that one?
We just need to check if there is more speakers after that last call.
Okay, so it doesn't go to script, script A?
It does in a moment, sorry, the script is.
I got ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm just checking. We have no more, no more speakers and nobody in the chamber, so you can proceed to close the list.
Thank you. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
None for me, thank you.
Thank you, does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff.
Does council have any questions for staff? I see Counselor D Genova on the queue.
Maybe I jumped the gun, I was prepared to move the recommendation if no one else is on the queue.
Okay, so since council will now make its decision, do we have a mover for the recommendation?
Counselor D Genova.
And a seconder?
Second.
Thank you, I heard Counselor Weeb, it has been moved by Counselor D Genova and seconded by Counselor Weeb. Is there any debate? Counselor D Genova, do you want to say anything further or you're, you're good to go?
I'm just happy to support this and was appreciate, appreciative of the applicant sharing the goal for the retail space to consider a local retailer and also appreciate the affordable housing that this will create.
Great, so in that case, Clerk, can you take us to a vote, please? And that appears to be unanimous in favor of this three absent, thank you very much. So now let's move on to number five on our agenda for this evening. This is a rezoning of 756 West Twenty Sixth Avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item five? Hearing none, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by B Square Architecture to rezonate 756 West Twenty Sixth Avenue from single D hedge houses in duplexes district to multiple dwelling district to permit downtown house development of a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. If rezoning is approved, as the subsequent development permit process will entail review of a proposed form of development. The general manager of planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda.
Thank you very much.
The following correspondence may be received since referred to public hearing, seventy pieces of correspondence support and disrepresent all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Very good, any speakers on this item who wish to speak to council?
Move to wave the presentation.
It hadn't gotten until that point quite, but according to the script, if you could just let me get through this next bit, we'll go back to that. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 hashtag before the close of speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream, there will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Austin Norrie, rezoning planning planner, rezoning center, planning urban design sustainability here to present the application. This is where it says staff will offer to wave the presentation if there are no speakers registered.
So moved? Wave.
Clerk, can you verify that there are no speakers registered?
There is one speaker registered and waiting on the line to speak.
Then I'll remove my.
Thank you, so I guess then the staff's presentation, please.
It's on the live screen?
I'm still seeing council chambers.
It looks like it's live on the live stream now, thank you. So yes, before you this evening is a townhouse rezoning application under the Canby Corridor Plan and is an application under a simplified rezoning process. The simplified process was developed in order to secure utility upgrades to accommodate additional growth within the Canby Corridor. Since this proposal is to rezone the site to the RM8A district schedule, no form of development is required at the rezoning stage, however, public feedback or the proposed form of development will occur during the development permit phase. This simplified process reduces the processing time for rezoning applications, so it can reach public hearing in a shorter time period than a typical rezoning application. The rezoning application for the townhouse at 756 West Twenty Sixth Avenue is located in the Queen Elizabeth neighborhood of the Canby Corridor. The proposal is for stacked townhouses or row houses up to three stories with a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. The site consists of one single family detached home located along West Twenty Sixth Avenue at the mid-block between Willow and Heather Street. The property is just one block south of West King Edward Avenue and is located two blocks southwest of the King Edward Canaline Station. The site is located a block from Braymore Park, which is, which is just east of the property. A total of approximately 700 postal notifications were distributed within a two block radius of the site location. Five pieces of correspondence or feedback were received through the Shapier City's webpage. Feedback included concerns regarding whether the housing would be affordable, whether the townhouse development would fit in with the neighborhood, as well as concerns regarding potential construction and noise disruptions in the surrounding area. Considering the feedback on the proposal's form of development, it will inform development planning staff when reviewing the development permit application. To conclude, this proposal aligns with the Canby Corridor Plan and would join one of approximately forty-five townhouse projects that have been approved since the plan's adoption in 2018. If approved, the project will provide roughly $200,000 in public benefits and will contribute to the number of consultant construction and supplier based jobs within the area. Staff recommend approval of this application along with the conditions of approval outlined in Appendix B of the report. Thank you, and staff and the applicant team are available for questions.
Great, so that's the question, is the applicant team here to speak to this application?
We are.
Would you like to speak to the application?
A lot of this time, I don't think there's a real issue, it's not really a form of development as it is an adoption of a certain zoning, so I think we'd just like to sit back and let it run its course.
Are there any questions then from council to staff or the applicant team? Please note that this is the only opportunity of council to ask questions of the applicant. I note, first up on the queue is Counselor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, I just have one clarifying question to staff if I could, and so is that correct that this is a application for rezoning but not specifically moving forward development at this point? I know it's one lot of fifty feet and I couldn't pick up in the report unless I'm missing it, the planned number of units. Is this intended to be a lot assembly or is it simply the rezoning for the townhouse use?
Thank you for your question, Counselor, Austin Norrie, rezoning planner on the line. And this is the rezoning process for the site and the development permit application informed development review will happen after the public hearing. It's a separate process and it's during that time the applicant will submit their TP with the amount of units that they're planning to intend as part of the proposal.
Okay, so we don't have a sense of that at all at this, at this point?
The applicant hasn't told me the number of units, however, they are on the line and they may have an idea of how many they could land on the site, but at this time, it's still something they're determining.
Okay, maybe I'll direct that question to the applicant if you would like to answer, you don't, it's up to your discretion, but I'm curious on the the intention of the site.
I mean, right now, there's a, it's a really complicated process, there are a lot of requirements for affordability on RM8A. Nine hundred to twelve hundred square feet of units have to be provided at forty-five percent of the count. And so it makes a kind of complicated almost like a Jenga puzzle in terms of trying to figure out how all these kind of units meet the criteria without overmaking, without making them too large, the zoning has been written specifically for making sure that there are affordable and family oriented housing units coming out of this, and so part of the requirement beyond the sort of size requirement of forty-five percent is also three, twenty-five percent of the units have to be three bedroom as well. And so there, there are these kind of complicated forms of development that would come out of the zoning and like we really haven't landed on the actual firm number of how many units there are. You know, like the, I think the zoning allows for up to one hundred forty-six units per hectare. And for this project alone, it could be eight, but it would be a real disaster, you wouldn't be doing something like that, right, it's just, doesn't meet the criteria for half of the affordability of the units and trying to meet the requirements of three bedrooms and all these other things, so it's a real, like we're still working through the process right now, to be honest.
Okay, no, I appreciate the honesty and the perspective, I'll leave it there, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it, Counselor Kirby Young?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, next is Counselor Swanson for five minutes.
Yeah, thanks, to the applicant, what are the affordability requirements?
It's really, it's a mandate for RM8 and it comes down to size and everybody knows that affordability, like if everybody's building a duplex, say, of the existing zoning on that site, which is RS1, you're now allowed to build a duplex with a lockoff suite for both units, so you're technically building four units, but the unit itself can't be stratified, and so you'd end up having, say, a twenty-five hundred square foot townhouse on either side. And knowing today's market, you can see that that's going to be a very expensive unit. And so what the RM8 does is it provides And so what the RM eight does is it provides more affordable housing within the range of nine hundred to twelve hundred square feet of size. And so like, they're sort of, like, everybody's, I can see what the city's done with this, right? They're sort of said, okay, well, if it's a thousand dollars a square foot, we're going to make nine hundred thousand dollars units to one point two million dollar units, and people and families can afford that. And that's part of the trigger mechanism is the overriding thing for the three bedrooms at twenty-five percent that they have, right? So there's, like I said, there's a lot of stuff going on, and in terms of affordability, everybody's just trying to build as cheaply as possible right now because it's really expensive, but the limitations on size are a kind of a mandate almost that kind of force affordability onto the project just by virtue of the size.
And is the idea that these would be owned townhouses, not rented townhouses?
That's correct. They're strata.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up, we have councillor De Genova.
Thanks. I actually have a question for staff. May I ask it now? Chair?
Sorry, it's.
May I ask the question to staff now?
Yes, yes, you may.
Thanks. I'm wondering if staff could perhaps share how this will impact the supply of townhouse stock in the city and specifically in this neighborhood?
Hi councillor De Genova.
Is this a neighborhood, sorry, just to follow up to that already, is this a neighborhood where there is a lot of townhouse stock currently available for either rental and/or purchase? Thanks.
Thanks councillor De Genova. To answer your question about the current townhouse stock, I'm not totally familiar with that response, but what we do know is that the Canby Corridor Plan does anticipate an increase in the availability of townhouse stocks, townhouse stock through this redevelopment of Canby Corridor Townhouse proposals, and I think through the plan, which is thirty years, we're anticipating some eleven hundred potential sites that are available for redevelopment to townhouses, which would generate some eighty-four hundred units of townhouses through the rezoning to RM eight A or RM eight AN, which this is. So it would increase that supply in the future.
All right, thank you. I did know that recently, and maybe this was a few months back, I looked at townhouse stock, and it was, there was not much in Vancouver throughout the entire city, including this neighborhood, so I'm just wondering, is that still an issue right now, although there's plans for the future?
Thanks councillor De Genova. I would say that through the Housing Vancouver Strategy, which sets out targets for townhouse and family housing units, we, and through the Canby Corridor Plan, I think that there is an opportunity and a need to increase that stock. I don't know what currently exists. I don't have those numbers in the Canby Plan or citywide, but what we do know is that there are targets that move us closer to advancing some of our housing goals in the future.
Thanks, but just to identify, this is a need, and it is one of the types of housing right now that we have high demand for and low supply in Vancouver?
I believe so, yes, and that's been validated through the work that we've done in the Canby Corridor Plan and in Housing Vancouver.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
That's all from you, chair.
I don't see any more on the queue. So we will now hear from the public, but I don't believe we have anybody on the list. Is that correct clerk?
Chair Hardwick, yes, we do. Yes, this is item five. We do have one registered speaker, and they are on the line.
Terrific. Can you please advance them?
Yes, speaker number one, Oliver Tennant.
Hi there councillor, thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name's Oliver Tennant, and I just want to call in in support for this project. A someone who lives and works in Vancouver as a young professional and is in a long-term relationship and plans to grow their family soon. This type of housing is something that's very attractive to us to stay in the city. You know, having Queenie right there, having Van Dusen just down the street, Douglas Park in the north, it's a very special spot, and as a young professional with a, you know, growing family, we're not very interested in living in a single-family house really ever, but to be able to turn a house into four, six, or eight townhouses, whatever it ends up being, is something that is really attractive to us as we really plan to keep our roots in Vancouver and support housing options like this for the future of Vancouver and for young people who have growing families. So thank you so much, and yeah, I just wanted to call in to express my support.
Thank you, speaker. Sorry, just switching back to a different screen here. Just give me a second. Clerk, I believe that's it for speakers at this time?
Yes, Chair Hardwick, that was the one and only registered speaker, so we can now check and see if any others wish to join.
So if there are any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code eight zero four seven zero hashtag before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium.
Chair Hardwick, we have no speakers on the line, so just two more calls.
If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please let us know. Are there any additional speakers for council that wish to speak to council?
So that was your call number two. We still have none.
And call number three, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free. Do I need to repeat the whole thing again, clerk?
It is being tweeted out, and we have none others, so this would be the time that we take a five-minute break.
It suggested a five-minute recess to see if any calls come in, so it's now seven thirty-seven, we'll be back at seven forty-two. Thank you.
Yes, let's just check, we have quorum. One, two, three, four, five. We need council members to engage their video, please. You have quorum, so you can start when you're ready.
Looks like, has anyone joined? Are there any other speakers?
Yes.
Hello, please go ahead for five minutes. Speaker, can you state your name?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you state your name, please?
My name is Naomi Steinberg, and I'm a third-generation Vancouverite, born to these beautiful supernatural lands, unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Flavitu, shared by people of all nations. I'm grateful we have constructed and continue to uphold the political system that allows concerned citizens to speak their minds. Tonight, I am on the agenda for the following rezonings. Seven five six West Twenty-Sixth, seven oh seven West Twenty-Seven, one nine seven West Twenty-Sixth, one five seven to one six three West King Edward Avenue. All four of these sites are being considered under the Canby Corridor Plan, ostensibly meeting a housing unit goal. I could say, go for it, rezone, but I need to state that the extreme weather event and subsequent flooding and tragic losses we have just witnessed across B.C. in the past week remind us we need to think differently about how we plan and build our cities. Based on regional modeling, we know that Vancouver can expect more rain events and more heat domes. I urge you to lean in, and if going ahead with these rezonings insists on architectural innovations that will scaffold social and economic interaction, housing and climate responses outlined in the Vancouver Plan will not otherwise be appropriately met. There are infill typologies that don't need excavation or urban logging while enabling aging-in-place fostering community resilience and asset sharing. At the same time, I urge you to consider the rate of change, and if voting in favor of these rezonings shorten noise hours for excavators, drillers, shores, et cetera. We want livability, stability, and affordability, not hyperdensity, speculation, and costly mistakes. About mistakes, I could speak from my lived experience around the Canby Corridor and could reference sewer, stormwater, and utility hookups, but I don't want to be called out of order. Please, use your power and influence wisely. I understand that the ground-oriented townhouse typology increases a kind of so-called missing housing stock, but is it worth the excavation? Did you know that cookie-cutter green technologies are the antithesis of sustainability as they do not respond to place? Further, it seems we need to question if adequate GIS information, including geotech data, is available for developers. I remind you, many of the sites in question are within the Falls Creek watershed. Given it is likely the climate crisis will continue to hit the city with wind, sun, and rain, has the city's tree survey been completed? Does this accounting for canopy permeability and habitat span both public and private property? You have begun relations with the development corporations, engineers, and architects for one nine seven West Twenty-Sixth, one five seven to one six three West King Edward, seven five six West Twenty-Sixth, seven oh seven West Twenty-Seven. Relationships I trust are longstanding with land, place, and the Indigenous host nations. We need accountability with regards to infrastructure upgrades. Already, my experience on the Canby Corridor is of catastrophic failures to retaining walls, sinkholes, noise, and flooding. If the DCL is waste because future upgrade costs are externalized to the developer, how does this make housing less expensive? Don't costs stay the same, and who pays for quality control and inspectors? And how will an area already poor in amenities gain any benefits from this brutal change? Of course, doing things innovatively carries its own risk, and we recognize there are carrying costs during the building permitting process that will continue to affect sale prices and subsequent rent affordability. Fifteen hundred is not affordable for a studio. As sufficient data accrues and permits are issued, these costs could be mitigated by making more than abatement mandatory. Can you legislate that developers partner with existing salvaging companies such as the Unbuilders or various urban firms? Can we create jobs and produce food? Can we increase the available skilled labor pool, divert from waste stream, be ecologically conscious, globally competitive, and trend-setting? Finally, I've been told there is a shortage of skilled labor, which could mean costs go up again when there are catastrophic failures due to mistakes. So use these and other upcoming rezonings as opportunities to test out innovations in policy and procedures that would aid in apprenticeships in skills within the trades and being an entrepreneur. Warehousing, upcycling, repurposing, and marketing salvage deconstruction materials. Housing is not a product. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brilliantly timed. I don't see any questions, but thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. So clerk, where are we now?
Just double checking, and no further speakers.
So we don't, we have no further speakers? Do we need to do? So we don't, we have no further speakers, do we need to do the three?
No.
The three time, that's all done now?
They've been done, yes.
Okay, back to Script A then.
First, you need to close the speakers list and then...
Saying that there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed.
Yes.
Okay, and take us to Script A. As few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 P.M. today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff, and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, we don't, thanks.
Thank you. Does the staff have any closing comments?
Staff have no closing comments, thank you.
Does how, council have any questions for staff? I see Counselor Weeb on the queue. Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, my first question is, why was the density bonus zone contribution calculated on the proposed zone-based density and not the current zone density?
Hi, Counselor Weeb, it's Teen here, Senior Rezoning Planner. I think your question, just to reiterate, was when, sorry, why the DBZ was placed on the current and not the proposed, am I correct?
It's actually, it looks like it's been calculated on the proposed zoning base density and not on the current zoning, and I'm wondering why the...
I see, I see. I'm sorry if there was an incorrect way of stating it in the report. The DBZ is actually applied based on the difference between the current density and the future proposed density, which is up to 1.2. So it should be that differential that the $55 a square foot or so is applied.
Okay, so if you do the calculation, it's being proposed like 150,000 is from the proposed zoning density, 1,300, and not the current zoning, 300. So can you explain why 146 and not the 4300, or why it's not at 55?
Sorry, I apologize, I think you were cutting out just a little bit, but I think, I think your question is, what, is the amount represented in the report accurate in terms of capturing the difference between the current and the proposed?
If I do my calculations, it looks like it's done between the proposed zoning base density of 4,678 and not 4,366, I'm wondering why.
Maybe I can have a look at the report if you don't mind, maybe we can just flip through that. Can we get back to you, Counselor Weeb?
Sure, second question, is recognizing that a home like this sells, just sold for $3 million on August 3rd, and they're on the market currently for $5 million, have we looked at increasing our proposed zoning base density to reduce the speculation in this neighborhood?
Thanks, Counselor Weeb, are you asking if we're looking at increasing the proposed density beyond the 1.2 that is currently proposed?
No, we're looking to increase it above the $55 a square foot, recognizing that it hasn't reduced speculation in the neighborhood, and we're seeing significant land increases.
I see.
And we're seeing that people are selling for about 500 a square foot buildable, and we're charging $55 a square foot.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Currently, we don't have any policy that allows us to change that per-square-foot flat rate for the DBZs, but we do update our contribution policy through the CACs, and we look at sort of financing growth as a citywide need, I would say, pretty regularly. So I think that that would be part of that work that would be captured, should that come forward, to look more closely at whether or not we are setting those figures at the accurate, at the accurate rate.
And the density bonus zone contribution, how much of the land lift percentage are we hoping to capture with that current density bonus zone contribution?
Well, I think that it's the difference between 0.70, which is the base density, and then the up to 1.20, which is, I guess, the increase in the land value. So I think that DBZ rate is intended to capture the increase that is proposed through the rezoning.
My question is, how much, normally we look at capturing 75% of land lift, how much of density bonus, how much of this percentage would be capturing of the current land lift?
Thanks for that question, it's a great question. I'm not totally sure if that percentage is equivalent to the 75% that we capture through a rezoning with a CAC, because this is intended to capture some of that lift. I don't know if that percentage is exactly 75%, but I would say it's probably somewhere in that similar ballpark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Weeb. Next up is Counselor Kirby Young for five minutes.
Seeing other questions, I'm happy to move the recommendations, Chair.
I see Counselor Swanson has just joined the queue.
Oh, okay, I will pause and go after then.
Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the original houses are selling for so much, would it be useful if we had a development cost expectation in this area like we do in the Broadway Corridor, so that the eventual price of the land would be a little lower and perhaps the resulting townhouses could sell for less?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Swanson, Teen here, Senior Rezoning Planner. I believe a DCE is applied during a planning program that is currently underway, such as the Broadway Planning Program, and I think it's intended to limit some kind of residential speculation. Because this isn't part of a planning program that's underway, and that planning program has been done earlier to come up with this idea of a rezoning policy for the townhouses, what we've done is we tried to capture the increase in land value through what we call a density bonus zone. And so I think the DCE functions a little bit differently in the, in terms of financing growth.
What I'm getting at here is, would it be productive to change the existing policies so that we could capture some of that increased value that the original owner gets, rather than waiting until we try and capture a little bit of the increased value from the density increase?
Thanks, Counselor Swanson, I do think that's probably more of a policy-related question, probably more for our policy group. I think under the current rezoning application, I don't think there is an, I think that the DBZ is currently what we would estimate in terms of capturing land value increase.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I know Counselor Weeb next is back on the queue.
Yeah, I guess just a quick question, if the valuation was different in this report that you guys, that was found later on to not be the $55 a square foot, is that something that could be changed at a later date if we approved this today?
Sorry, I feel like you're a little bit cutting out, but I'm going to direct that question back to my Assistant Director Yardley McNeil.
Evening, Council.
Can we have the point of privilege, can we have the question repeated? I'm also having a really difficult time hearing any...
I'm also, you're running out of time, Counselor Weeb.
Okay, so the question is, if the...
Would you like to move for a second round, or you're out of time?
No, if the DC, basically if the DC, the density bonus zone contribution is miscalculated on the wrong element, can that be changed at a later date?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Weeb, it's Yardley McNeil, Assistant Director Planning for rezoning. The current calculation was based on a community planning exercise and set in place at that point when council adopted it. Council could not make a change on that without having to open up the Canby Corridor Plan and reassess land values at that point. We do take a look at all fixed-rate DCL costs and density bonus costs on, and determine whether or not they're appropriate, and that work does come to council, and there's a report coming, I think in the early part of 2022, in the matter of a general report around those kinds of items. So it could be part, it won't be part of that as a change, however, but that would be how that work is done, and it wouldn't be kind of on a...
Thank you.
One budget at a time, thank you.
Sorry, we're way over time. Appreciate the answer, though. Counselor Kirby Young, on to you.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have some grace on time if we're not going to stick to it tonight. Can I, I'm happy to move the recommendations, please.
Second, Counselor DeGenova.
Okay, is there, that we, council has made its decision on this, will make a decision on this application, we have a mover, and Counselors Kirby Young and a secondary, Counselor DeGenova, is there any debate? I see Counselor Swanson on the queue.
Yeah, I have a problem with the Canby Corridor Plan because the resulting housing is so expensive, and it was kind of revealed tonight that one of the reasons is that the original houses get sold for such high amount because the owner is anticipating an upzoning. So I'm not going to be able to vote for this. That's it.
Thank you very much, Counselor Swanson. I guess now we can take us to a vote, please, Clerk. Oh, no, I see that Counselor Weeb has popped on.
Yeah. I, when doing the calculations, it looks like we are not capturing the land value that's needed to deliver the amenities. I do think this is the type of housing we need, middle housing, we talk about it a lot. I think we need to look, though, at how we're going to build complete communities and ensure we are capturing the value and dampening the speculation so that we can have more photo homes. But I will be supportive because it does meet our current policy, but I think recognizing how much these homes are going for, we're seeing pre-zoned homes for a minimum $5 million, almost double asking, which means we're not capturing the land value. So I think we need to revisit our policies to ensure we're capturing the value to build the amenities needed in neighborhoods, but this is meeting current policy, so we'll be supporting.
Thank you very much, Counselor DeGenova.
I will support this as it does meet current policy, and I appreciate staff's replies to other council's questions with shading the different policies that are met here. I also think that we have to be careful, not only are we sitting in public hearing and we have to apply the policies, but I also think about who do these amenities, at the end of the day, not only who will they be used by, which is the whole community, but who, at the end of the day, will pay for them? And that's also the full community, and that includes the middle. And I understand that, well, we need to find a way to provide more amenity, and maybe perhaps if we're swifter in delivering those amenities, especially with citywide DCLs or cash CACs, because that's upon the city to choose how to not only earmark those, but how to build those out. I think that it's really important that we consider who actually is paying more for that, because then in pro forma, that's going to be passed on to the end user, and that is the missing middle. Those are the people who are trying to scrape together a down payment or just barely being able to rent, but might just be this close to a down payment. So when we talk about the missing middle, that's who we're talking about. I think that we have to consider, in different venues, when we do consider policy, how that affects, you know, the applications and their ability to conform to those policies. But considering this does meet policy, and it will provide a type of affordable housing in the city, I will be supporting.
Okay, I think that's the last person on the queue. Clerk, can you take us to a vote, please? We have a result yet, Clerk? There, I see, we have six in favor, two in opposition, being Counselor Swanson and Counselor Hardwick. So now we will move on. We are now on, excuse me, as I go back up on script, forgive me for my slowness, we're on number six?
That is correct.
That is correct, okay, number six. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item number six? The Clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
Point of procedure?
He's back.
Yes, but somehow I'm disconnected, so I don't, like, I don't know if my, if the screen is now in your control, but anyway, I am back, I'm ready to chair again, but I think I'm going to need a break to make sure I have the panel up, I'm not sure who has the panel right now.
I don't have the panel, I've been sort of... making it up. Clerk, are you there? Can you, can you advise before we make a decision?
Yes, if you, excuse me, what I would recommend with Deputy Mayor Carr back, we take a three-minute break so that we could get her panel up and running again. Chair Hardwick, that would be my recommendation.
Well, we're at 8:05, might I suggest we make it five minutes and we'll be back at 8:10, is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, see everyone at 8:10, and over to you, Deputy Mayor Carr.
Great.
Chair Carr?
Yes?
We just need to check for quorum, and it is 8:10. So anytime you're ready.
Quorum. I'm looking for, I think.
One, two, three, four.
Five. Sarah, is Sarah there? Or Mike, Melissa, Colleen?
I think we got quorum. One, two.
Okay, I see Sarah. That's great. Perfect. Okay, I'm ready to go. Great. Thank you. And please be back. I'm rather, I think the clerk can now read the application and summary of correspondence received for the resoning application 6225-6263 Yukon Street. Go ahead, clerk.
This is an application by Forum Works Architecture to rezonate 6225 to 6263 Yukon Street from single detached houses in duplexes district to multiple dwelling district. To permit ten house development of a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. If rezoning is approved, a subsequent development permit process will entail review of a proposed form of development. The general manager planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received on this application since we referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list.
Great, thank you very much. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470, before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. I do note that we have no registered speakers for this item. We do have Austin Norrie, a resoning planner, who is prepared to present the application, but I'm certainly.
Move to wave the presentation.
Thanks to Counselor DeGenova.
Presentation.
I need a second for that. Great. All those in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Any opposed, say nay? Great. So then, thank you very much for the being there to give the presentation, but that's, we have moved to wave it. So I'm wondering if if the applicant team is willing to or wishes to speak to the application?
Hi, it's Norman Huth with Forum Works Architectural for the applicant team. We have no comments at this time, but happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Are there any questions from council, chief staff, or the applicant team? And I don't see anyone. So thank you very much for being there to answer those questions. But we will now proceed to hear, oh, wait a second, Counselor Weeb, do you have questions?
Yeah, there's a similar question to the last presentation to us. The density bonus zone contribution on this one is also calculated to propose zoning base density of .75 and not to the .70. And I'm wondering if I can get a staff answer to why?
Hi, Counselor Weeb. It's Teen Fan, senior rezoning planner. I think that when we check the numbers, the differential between 18,116 square feet, which is the base zoning, and then the 28,986 square feet for the proposed 1.2 FSR at $55 a square foot, I believe generates about $600,000 in a DBZ. So that's how we would apply that density bonus zone contribution. Is that?
Okay. Yeah, because when I calculate, yeah, when I calculate the 28,986 to the current zoning of 16,908 and times it by 55, it's 665,000. I know it's not a lot of money, but it seems like each one of these applications, we're putting some on the table. And when I look at online, right now, we are seeing this zoning going for 2 million more per unit when it's been zoned. And so I already feel like we're not capturing the land value. And so every little amount, I think, is integral because we are struggling to build the amenities in the neighborhood. So if that could just quickly be reviewed, that would be great. And other than that, that's my only question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Weeb. Counselor DeGenova, you have questions?
I was actually trying to take myself off the queue.
All right. I can do that for you. There we go. So, counsel, I'm going to first ask the clerk if there's anybody on the line or in the chambers?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to call out for the first of three times for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470, before the close of the speakers list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Are there any speakers on the line or in chambers, clerk?
No.
Okay, so I will move to my second call. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470, before the close of this list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Are there any speakers on the line or in chambers, clerk?
No.
Okay, this is my third and final time. If there are any additional speakers for this item wishing to speak to us, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470, before the close of the list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Any speakers in the council? Well, actually, at this point, I'm going to wait five minutes. We have a five-minute break. Thanks, council. Yes, I'm just looking for quorum.
Yeah, we just, oh, looks.
Oh, we just got it. Great. Perfect. Thank you.
So we're ready when you are.
Thank you. I'm ready. Thank you, everyone. Clerk, I wonder if you could let me know if there's any speaker on the line or in the chambers to speak to this item?
Just double checking. And no.
Great. Seeing that there are no additional speakers then, the speakers list is now closed. There's few or no public comments were received on the site after 5:00 p.m. today. I am suggesting we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to a hearing closing comments, asking for the questions of staff and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any further closing comments?
Comments, thank you.
No? Okay. Counselor, do you have any questions? Pardon me? Staff?
Staff have no closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DeGenova, if you're on for questions or?
Try my luck. I don't see anyone else on the queue, so I'm just going to move the motion to.
I think that sounds wonderful. Go ahead. We have a motion on the floor. Is your seconder?
Second, Counselor Corvian.
Thank you. Do you wish to debate, Counselor DeGenova?
I will be supporting this, and I see that it meets a variety of policies and appreciate the work that staff and the applicant have put into this. And I'll leave it there.
Great. Thank you very much. And on to you, Counselor Weeb.
Yeah, I will be supportive. However, I am critical that this policy, we're seeing tons of these being sold right now online, similar square footage as three lots like this for 15 million. And we're capturing a very small amount of land capture. We've got a community center in the area that's been trying to do a $1.2 million renovation for the last decade. And yet, we've got projects, each one of the ones we'll be voting on tonight has a $2 million land left, and yet we can't deliver the amenities to the neighborhood. So we've got to be careful in making our policies to ensure that we are capturing and delivering the amenities to create the complete communities that we keep talking about. So this does meet policy. I do think that we are missing about 60,000 that we could capture under policy. However, I will be supporting this project, but recognizing we do need to do better in the future to reduce land speculation and deliver the amenities to our neighborhoods.
Thank you very much, Counselor Weeb. Counselor Hardwick, closing comments over to you.
Every decision that we make based on flawed policy is to use the computer science term, garbage in, garbage out. So we are inflating land values and then turning around and asking ourselves why it's so, housing is so expensive in the city. And we still haven't answered the basic questions about what we can build within existing zoning. And the quest for data continues. So there's no way that I can support, you know, this, this application and others like it, because what they will do is inflate the value of the land. When we get the next set of housing role data, property role data from B.C. assessment, the assessed value of the land will have gone up and everything in the area because a rising tide lifts all boats. And we can pretend this is not happening, or we can address it. So I'm going to address it by voting against this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hardwick. I don't see anyone else on the queue to speak to it, so clerk could move us to a vote on this?
I'm just wondering if I could speak into this as well?
No, sorry. We are in the middle of a vote.
Okay.
So, counsel, that does pass with Counselor Swanson and Counselor Hardwick in opposition. Thank you. So now we are moving to a item seven on our agenda, rezoning of 197 West 26th Avenue. First of all, does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item seven? Aye and aye. Clerk, would you please read the application and summary of correspondence on this item?
There is an application by B-Square Architecture to rezonate 197 West 26th Avenue from single detached houses in duplexes district to multiple dwelling district to permit ten house development of a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. If rezoning is approved, a subsequent development permit process will entail review of a proposed form of development. The general manager planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since we referred to public hearing. 16 pieces correspondence in support, 32 pieces of correspondence in opposition, one piece of correspondence related to other aspect of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Thank you so much, clerk. Any speakers for this item wishing to speak to council? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470, before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. Counselor DeGenova, are you on?
I was going to move to wave the presentation.
Okay. We have, I need a seconder for that?
Second, Counselor Domnado.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you, counselors, for moving that. So we will not have that presentation. And I'm wondering if the applicant team is here to speak to the application?
I don't mind speaking to the application for just a second.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to say that I, like, when counselors are going against the OCP or the kind of policies of the site to increase the housing and density from single family to multifamily, I find that problematic. And.
Sorry, excuse me. Are you, are you the applicant?
Yeah, I'm the architect.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Yes. Yeah. And so I just want to say, like, like, everybody thinks that everybody's making a killing here. And the problem is also supply of housing. And Counselor DeGenova has spoken many times tonight about, like, the need for the missing middle. And when projects are being voted against for, oh, there's too much money going on here. And, I mean, city county, city planning has put a lot of effort into RM8A to make sure that there are a range of housing for families there. It's not a sort of like, you know, luxury housing sort of thing. These are smaller.
Procedure?
Yes?
Is this according to the procedure, Chair?
I, I think he's speaking to the applicant, application, and he can speak to the application.
I'm speaking to the zoning is what I'm speaking to, because that's all we're talking about here, right? We're going to talk about a rezoning from RS1 to RM8A. And it's a well-considered zoning, and it's not about, like, we're trying to fulfill a need for housing in the city of Vancouver sometimes. And I find it frustrating when people say, oh, everybody's making too much money, and the single-family house here should just stay the way it should. And, you know, like, the last project, these, these houses are assessed at $2.7 million for a 2,000-square-foot 1950 house. for a 2,000-square-foot 1950 house. They are not affordable. And when you look at the metrics that are involved in trying to make a R M eight housing project with all the quotients for percentages of housing ranges between 900 and 1,200, and, you know, 25% of them have to be three-bedroom and all these kind of things. There's, there's a lot of stuff moving on. There's a lot of complicated moving parts. And I think if you want to come out and say you're supportive of housing, you have to sort of embrace what's going on in this, you know, idealized sort of thing that, that the city of planners have come up with in R M eight A to, to make housing at least part of a missing middle. And so I'll just leave it at that. This does an opening statement for what the zoning is presenting and the possibilities beyond just a single-family house.
Okay, and I think you have some questions, or, sorry, questions could be to you or to staff. Counselor DeGenova, you are not, you are on the.
That is a holdover from trying to wait the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Weep, questions to either the applicant or staff?
Yeah, question to the applicant. Recognizing that a lot of these R M eight A properties in the region are now selling for five, so 2 million over asking. Can you talk about the financial feasibility? I think this is great type of housing to try to figure out how we can fit six to eight on a property. But can you talk about the financial feasibility and how we can create policies that allow someone like yourself or the developer to purchase that the land at a reasonable rate to create the units?
I'm not the, I'm just the architect. I don't do the purchase. I didn't buy the land. But I know the value of, I mean, I'm aware of what they purchased a property for relative to the assessed value, which was done by B C Assessment. And there is not a huge spread there. It, and, and there's a whole lot of risk that was taken on that property. I don't know why every, the assumption is that every property sold for $5 million. And I don't have the number in front of me for what it sold for. But it wasn't $5 million. I can tell you that.
Yeah, I mean, the last project sold, you're right, it sold for three, just over 3 million. It was assessed at 2.8. You're right, that wasn't a large land lift on that project. But we're seeing R M eights, when they're being rezoned, then worth 5 million per. So for me, it's understanding how we can reduce that risk and deliver more affordability or land lift. But I appreciate you coming to speak today. It's good.
You know, I, I mean, I'd like to help you. I don't know, like, like, land is a commodity that's being, you know, bargained for, and I, I see it myself. And, and, you know, putting more taxes on property isn't going to stop speculation. It's just going to raise the price on other people who've already started their project. And it's like, holy cow, they put another $100 on that project, I'm gonna add it to mine. Because those guys, six months down the road, are gonna have to put it on there. And like, when you keep compounding taxes on taxes, the affordability goes out the window, you know? Like, that's, it's, it's trying to, like, regulate developers and bringing more taxes to the city isn't gonna, you know, do so much about putting the brakes on a project. It just means it gets passed off to the end user.
Well, thanks for coming to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Counselor Weep, there are no other counselors on the queue to ask questions to either the applicant or staff. So I'm going to move to hearing from the public. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Clerk, do we have any speakers on the line to this item?
Yes, there are speakers on the line, Chair Carr.
Brent Nichols on number one on the line?
Just double checking. No, speaker number one is not on the line, but speaker number two is waiting.
Great, thank you. Blaine Cairns, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, we can hear you perfectly. Go ahead to speak to the item to council.
Thank you. Thank you. City council members, my name is Blaine Cairns, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity to address you. I am strongly opposed to the proposed rezoning of 197 West 26th Avenue from RS1 to R M eight A. I, along with my wife, J D and Cairns, are the owners of the home located at 191 West 26th Avenue. In 2004, we purchased this home, and we were drawn to the area for the beauty of the neighborhood, a collection of homes which people cared about in a community which knew and cared for one another. It was a neighborhood of families. Our intent was to lay roots and become a part of the neighborhood, and so we did. Originally built in the 40s and built in the heritage style, we preserved this house, now almost three-quarters of a century old. We carefully transformed it into our home, taking great care of the landscape and beautify the property on which it sits. We built relationships with our neighbors. Unfortunately, however, the area is changing as the single homes and families which first drew us to the neighborhood are being lost to a more densified plan for the neighborhood. And now this change has reached our doorstep. The plan is to place six to 10 townhomes on this property next to us. We are the most impacted by this proposal, and so with that in mind, we oppose this proposal. And the reasons why we oppose this proposition are multifold, and I wish to outline just some of the concerns we have. Firstly, our backyard has been a place to enjoy the privacy of family life. This is a place of rest and quiet. What was once a place of privacy and beauty will be replaced with a three-story structure looking down upon us. No longer will we, or our immediate neighbors, be able to walk into the quiet of a backyard without being looked down upon by either the residents of these townhomes or just the physical presence of a structure of this size. Whether or not windows look down upon us, we will be imposed upon by townhomes, six of them, 10 of them, lining our property with little and no buffering separating us. To this day, there are magnificent trees in the backyard of the property on 197 West 26th. And with the proposed development, we fear that the natural beauty and privacy provided by these mature trees will be lost as trees are removed. And we will lose the natural sunlight on our back garden space as a structure of this size will block out sunlight, particularly in the afternoon and evening. And along our streets, both we and our neighbors have carefully designed our frontage to reflect what is in keeping with the neighborhood, that being manicured lawns and floral gardens. And the proposed structure may in fact extend towards the front property line and not match the setbacks of the homes along our street. And certainly with more people comes more congestion. Already, we have difficulty securing parking in front of our own homes. The residents of the developments along King Edward now park in front of our home. With a new development behind us on King Ed, and now what is proposed beside us, parking will become even more inaccessible to us in front of our home. And of great concern, there is a large depression running across 26th Avenue and onto the property at 197 due to an underground stream. This greatly concerns me. What lies beneath the surface? And how might opening up this underground stream impact our adjacent frontage? In fact, years ago, thinking it might be a potential sinkhole, I contacted the city to alert them to this significant depression across the city and onto the property. This neighborhood is a rich and beautiful area. It's one of character in crafts and homes, and not a street on which a development of townhomes would be in keeping. We do not want to see the flavor and character of our neighborhood lost. And I ask you to consider the impact which this development will have upon us and our neighborhood. We simply want to preserve the enjoyment of our home and the property upon which it sits. Development as intrusive as this will significantly compromise that. Should this development proceed, we ask the developers that the plans and the footprint of this project respect the character of our neighborhood and address the concerns which I, along with many of my neighborhood neighbors that I have chatted with, have towards this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind remaining on the line, you do have some questions. Counselor Hardwick, questions to the speaker?
Thank you. As, as per your, your closing remarks, you've spoken to your neighbors. Why have they not signed up to speak or written counsel in greater numbers?
I can't speak as to why. Many people have an aversion to speaking in public. I know that is something that many people fear. And so I know many have submitted their, their, their feelings with a vote. And I think a vote is as important as speaking. We can't condemn or criticize people who don't want to speak in public. Their voice matters.
Well, I'm not disputing that it matters. It's just that how does council know if we don't hear from people? And, and I'm very happy that you've come to speak to us, but I, I think it's a question that has merit. Thank you very much. Any, you know, how many other houses of similar stead are there on your block?
On our block, on our, on our street, there are probably, I'm thinking, 12 to 15, I would think.
And are those all single-family or there's multifamily or suites?
They are all single-family. There are no duplexes on our street or in our neighborhood that I, they are all single dwellings.
And what vintage are they again? What vintage when the?
It's a mixture. Many were built post-world war, and neighbors have really crafted their homes to look desirable. And some have, some families have come in, I know, and have built lovely homes. And this has become their dream home. So, and they have all fit in beautifully with the neighborhood.
Has the neighborhood hollowed out? We hear a lot about neighborhoods hollowing out.
Can you specify what you mean by hollowing out?
People not living there.
Oh, no, no, no. We can walk down our street with our dog and talk to families. We know neighbors by name. So no, quite the contrary. This has remained a pocket of families who know each other and have remained and have invested in this neighborhood.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I thank you. You have more questions, so please stay on the line.
May I, may I make one comment? Brent Nichols wants to speak.
Actually, no. You made your statement, but you, you do have questions from several counselors. So perhaps the questions will lead to an appropriate response with that comment. Counselor Kirby Young, I'm just going to just reset your timer. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, and thanks for speaking to council. I was looking, the current zoning of the RS1 permits single detached houses and duplexes. You mentioned you don't have duplexes currently. So my question to you is, would you be supportive of the existing zoning of duplexes, but you feel that a townhome is too dense versus a duplex?
You know, I, I, I've seen, I don't know what the designation is. I think it's RT six. I'm not sure what it is. I think it's something like that. I've seen pockets in, not too far from our area whereby, you know, two or three homes have been built, but it looks like a single home from the outside. And that is more in keeping. I mean, if it were to go to that, that would be more acceptable. But it really is in keeping rather than these monstrosity, three-story that, that completely overshadow the adjacent properties. So I guess in answer to your question, I would be somewhat more favorable, in favor of that.
So it's more about the aesthetics in terms of the building typology than the number of units?
Not, not just aesthetics. You can build, I mean, you can build, you can build a three-story complex and it can look very aesthetic. But it's the impact on adjacent properties, and that's not aesthetics. That's just, that's livability. That's enjoyment of property. That's not robbing one of privacy or beauty or any of those things that you walk into a backyard that you would lose. So, I mean, it's not just a matter of aesthetics. It's far deeper than that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor Domnado, questions to the speaker?
Yes, thanks for calling this evening. Appreciate your reflections. And I appreciate the question Counselor Hardwick asked about, you know, hollowing out of the neighborhood. But I am curious, because we've seen a number of these in terms of the R M eight zonings. Is there, are there townhomes on King Edward there on 25th that are going up or already built?
Yes, there are.
There are. How many townhomes are there roughly?
I don't know the number, but from Camby through to Columbia, I believe there are two significant projects, one being Solo, which is a retirement assisted living home. And then there's a, a significant project just, just east of, of that development. And then, again, directly from Columbia to lots along King Ed eastward, there is something going up. And then I believe from Manitoba towards Maine, there is a project going up. But those are all on the main arteries.
Just trying to get a context for sort of nearby?
Yeah, those are on the main arteries. Those aren't infiltrating into the feeder streets like ours. So those are on.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get at. I'm just trying to clarify.
So it's a very different feel for that, where there's the business of traffic and there's a flow. You step back from that and things are quiet. It becomes a neighborhood. And so that's very different in, in, in flavor.
Can I ask you one more question? Just in that vein, is there, sort of in your more smaller streets, do you have a number of laneways and secondary suites that are part of the, the neighborhood homes nearby?
I believe some homes have built carriage homes. But that's, that's, to the extent, that's all that I know of. And that's, there aren't very many, but one, one was behind us, but that home was taken down. And, and I believe there's probably one more on one of the homes fronting King Ed.
Okay. I appreciate, and I, I was just curious because I'm trying to get a sense of the, the density and in terms of some, and some of the, because we're obviously seeing with some neighborhoods, some added laneways and then secondary suites. And so it's adding that gentle density. And so I was just curious what the landscape was for you there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and those are your questions. Thank you very much for taking the time to speak to council and answer all those questions. Okay, we are now, thank you again, moving on to speakers that are on the line. And the clerk informed me that actually Speaker one was on the line, so I'm going to go back to Speaker one, Brent Nichols. Brent Nichols, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Go ahead. You're very clear. I've took up to five minutes.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. I can fill in some of the gaps of what Blaine was just talking about. I'm Blaine's neighbor. I'm two doors down and three houses away from this development application. We have 15 homes on our street, nine of which has been, have been significantly renovated, two of which, or three of which have laneway homes in them. My house has a suite. There's two families that live on my property. I am very hopeful that I will eventually build a laneway home that my children can live in. We are a neighborhood of people that know each other, talk to each other, share the life that we've built together raising our family. I have many concerns, and I'm very much opposed to this development. And I'm going to start with one that I think is worth spending a little time in. And in the appendix to this matter, I submitted a letter detailing what we believe as neighbors is a significant concern, which is a historical waterway that goes underneath this property. We've looked at historical maps, and I know that the, the report to the council said that while the rezoning site does not contain an old stream, the adjacent property to the east contains a north-south underground stream. We believe that is inaccurate. We have seen for 20 years that there is an obvious depression in the front of that property that has been filled in twice and continues to become depressed. The sidewalk is broken, and I've provided historical maps on the submission and a drone photo which shows the line of what we believe is the underground stream. I know that there is a hydrology monitor on the property, but our concern is that that is located about 15 feet away from the depression that we've seen. That has been there for as long as I've owned the property, which is almost 20 years. And I do have a large amount of concern about townhouse development that would go deep into. that would go deep into the ground and possibly divert that stream toward Blaine's property, who just spoke, and to my property and the other properties in the vicinity. So, I think that is something that needs to be very carefully considered before any changes to zoning happen. We are all concerned on this lot, or on this, on this block about the possible overdensification of that property. I think it was councillor Hardwick who was asking how many, why have not more people signed up to speak? 32 people, where there's been 32 written oppositions for this, against this application, and only 16 in support. None of the 16 names that support this are our neighbours. We know them by name. They do not represent our street or our neighborhood that we've built together. Our kids went to the elementary school down the street. My teenagers now go to Eric Amber. There is one other speaker that is listed, and that's Oliver Tennant, who is a Vancouver real estate developer. We, that have the 32 written submissions that are opposed, represent our street and our neighbours that will be directly impacted. The other area of concern is the mature trees on this property. There is some trees that tower far above even the six-story development on King Edward. And we're really concerned that those trees would be lost with any rezoning and development application that would come out of that rezoning. And a lot of the submissions have captured that as well. And I hope that council has had the time to review those 32 written oppositions. To also address the questions earlier about townhouse supply, directly behind us, there is, I believe, 17 townhouses currently being built. There is a very large townhouse development between Manitoba and Ontario that on average is selling for about $2 million. That is not affordable. That is, that kind of development is not going to allow young families the opportunity to get into the market. When if you go four blocks east, you can buy a single-family home lot for less than that amount. So, we have a growing supply of townhouses.
That is it for your time?
Have I read my time?
Yeah, you have, you're, you're just over. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Yeah, great, thank you. Thank you. We're moving now, council, on numbers three and four. Speakers have withdrawn to number five, Oliver Tennant. Oliver Tennant, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, fantastic. Yeah, I spoke earlier in favor of the other townhouse development there on West 26th. And I want to stay on to speak in favor of this one too. And I really do want to reiterate some of those comments I had made earlier. Again, long-term relationship, having a young family in Vancouver, wanting to obviously stay and grow a family in Vancouver. We have no interest in purchasing a single-family home, nor can we afford one. And projects like this for burgeoning young families are something I hope you can support because it's something we definitely need. And, you know, it's a bit tough for me because hearing the former speaker trying to call me out saying I don't live in the neighborhood or anything like that, I think it's kind of unfortunate because it is a great neighborhood and I hope that neighborhood can be shared. And I think when it comes to projects like this, these townhouse projects that were formerly single-family, the group of individuals that we're not really considering right now are the ones that may be living there in the future when it's completed and can add to the neighborhood and add to the community. So, I just hope council members that the future residents of this building are taken into account and that I am in full support of it as we're currently looking for housing like this, my family and I. And it's, it being a single-family house isn't something our family wants, needs, or can afford. And we really welcome projects like this. So, again, thank you for letting me speak again tonight. I just felt the need to stay on because I saw there was another project like this on. And have yourself a good evening and thank you again.
And thank you very much for staying on to speak to this. And there are no questions for you, but again, thank you for speaking to council. Speaker six, Jadeen Cairns.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have up to five minutes to speak to council.
Perfect, thank you, council. This is my first council meeting. I'm very excited to be able to speak. My name is Jadeen Cairns and I do reside at 191 West 26th. I live next door to the proposed project. A lot of the things that I had talked about or that I had prepared to speak on, Blaine, Cairns, and Brent had already spoken on. So, I'm going to tell you sort of my story a little bit. And it's probably not a unique one. I am against this zoning and I will tell you the reason for. I am so fortunate to live in city and I thank you, city councillor, for working so long and hard. I've been watching your work here just tonight and you do this all the time. So, thank you for working so hard at trying to ensure that we are living in a thriving, flourishing city of Vancouver. I am of Asian descent. My grandfather journeyed to this land and hoping to build a better life. I know density, I know life in a dense place. I was born in Hong Kong, a very dense city. I've been in New York with other relatives, very dense city. And I also believe that there's a space for, or there's a need for space. We, I've worked in mental health for 30 years and there's a lot of need for even animals and people to be not so dense. And I'm not, and actually, I'm not saying that the council is thinking of densifying as per New York or Toronto or anything like that. But I do believe there's a need for green and for space and for light. I know that we are going to be impacted by a three-level structure next to us. I've just lived with it, I felt it was fine. We actually have three-level townhomes behind us right now, which is causing all sorts of havoc with the density for parking and noise and all those things, just fine. And that's already blocked off our mountain view. So, when we have something next to us, it's going to block off more light. I digress there. But I do come from an impoverished background. My husband and I worked really hard. We've been in this neighborhood for 20 years and not to put aside what other young burgeoning families are in need of. But we were that young burgeoning family and we worked so hard. And now we're in a place where like, oh my gosh, I couldn't afford my house if I was to buy it. We are in neighborhood. We're also in a sandwich generation where we're looking after parents and kids at the same time. So, where are we going to move? Yeah, so, so this is just like my story, like I was saying. And I do want to comment that we don't want to live further out, which we could. And we don't have a lot of ability to buy a different space if we're going to be in the shadow of three-story buildings all over us because we're a tiny little modest home. This is a neighborhood. Last year, we had experiences where, you know, people were doing, there was flood on the, on the street and people were digging out the grass or the leaves for us. And every year, we actually mow each other's, we actually, I do, my husband mows our neighbor's lawn. We actually do each other's snow removal. When I walked my dog, next last month, my dog hurt himself and our neighbor down the block volunteered to carry my 60-pound dog back to my house for me because he had hurt his leg when running around. So, this is definitely a neighborhood and I fear for the loss of that. And I know that densification is important and I would vote for, I like what councillor Hardwick was saying, a gentler densification. There are homes here with suites, with laneway houses, carriage houses. And I would vote for that because this is actually quite a small street. I don't know we can support the mass and the structure that's proposed for six or 10 or eight, I don't know how many units there is. But we are all concerned, of course. So, thank you for your time and, yeah, I just hope that we can preserve the smaller streets and the densification of the bigger streets makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're very clear in your statements, appreciate that. No questions, but thank you again. Moving on to speaker seven, Naomi Steinberg.
Hi.
Hi.
It's me, hi, hi, it's me again. Thank you, yeah, it's me again. This has been really interesting and valuable to be part of. I spoke for 756 West 26th and mentioned that I was on the agenda for, for this 197 West 26th as well as 707 West 27 and 157 to 163 West King Edward. So, I just wanted to highlight in this case of 197 West 26th that this is a perfect example of an opportunity to lean into innovative city building. To be situated in relation to this quote "property" with an underground stream by the neighbor was amazing. Thank you. And I'd like to echo the sentiment that the whole hood looks like it's about to fall. With regards to the fact that the senior planner doesn't seem to know how many townhouses we need, I think it would be important to look at the current numbers and make sure that the developments that are being permitted that might necessitate these excavations and the urban logging, which is so painful to our landscape, to this land and to all the relations that could be built, don't, don't go ahead, which isn't to say don't go ahead with rezoning. We know the streamlining hearing is happening and you're deliberating, you know, ongoing is happening with that. But the land value question, the ongoing flipping, assembling and disassembling, yeah, I would just urge you to really use these opportunities to think differently about the way things can be done and numbers could be crunched. There is one condo development, as mentioned, just to the northwest of the proposed site, which is a perfect example of how a very modest sum of DCL money could be used towards community engagement in the form of a retaining wall. One of the beautiful trees that was retained in that development is eroding at its roots. So, community could be engaged through the building of this retaining wall and it could extend as far as the Opal Senior's condo development and have all kinds of ripple effect up and down King Edward and the whole Camby corridor. So, truly use these opportunities. Thank you.
Oh, great, and thank you. Appreciate the points that you've made and there are no questions for you, but again, thank you for speaking to council.
Thank you.
I believe that we do have another speaker on the line. Clerk, do we have a speaker eight? Julie Nichols?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I hear you. Go ahead, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'd like to make three points to council tonight. I am a property owner and resident on the block. I live four homes down from the proposed application. The first point I'd like, and I will say outright that I am opposed to the application. The first point I'd like to make is that there, what's a question earlier from council about why aren't people speaking if they're opposed? And I'd like to point council's attention to the 32 submissions of opposition that have been filed by our neighbours. They have been filed by people who live here in this neighborhood, who have an interest in this neighborhood. And they are specific. If you look at the submissions, they relate to very specific concerns around privacy, around mature trees, around historical waterways, around neighborhood character. I mean, people have taken time to write to council and access council and get the attention of council for these specific concerns about the specific application. In addition, there are 16 submissions in support of this application. And I would also direct council's attention to those 16 people who we know as neighbours are not or don't appear to be connected to our neighborhood. And they are also significantly duplicative of the 16 or the people that support the application for 756 West 26th. So, we don't know who these people are who are supporting the application, but they are very similar, if not identical, to those who have supported this developer's application on another property. So, our concern is that the numbers in support are not an accurate representation of the neighborhood or support for this application. I can also tell you from my personal experience, the developer and architect have not engaged the neighborhood generally, although I understand they may have had some direct conversations with very specific individual or individuals. But we have not been involved in this application and we haven't been canvassed. So, I would, I would ask council to be very careful about looking at just the numbers in support and questioning how many neighbours are speaking because I think our neighbours and our neighborhood have tried to be significantly engaged in this application. That's my first point. My second point is there are specific concerns that have been spoken to tonight by speakers and that are raised in submissions, privacy, et cetera, that I've mentioned. So, those, those, those are, those matter. They're, they're very intentional and they've been raised for council to consider. My main point though, and it strikes me because I've been listening to this public hearing from the beginning, is that we have been involved in the consultation about the Camby corridor from the beginning and there were a number of foundational principles that planners at the city raised with this neighborhood. And they included increasing density, they included having accessible, accessible, affordable housing. And, you know, our neighborhood is not generally opposed to that. But we have to balance those laudable goals with how specific blocks and specific individuals are being affected in the context of the overall development and policy of the Camby corridor. And what I'm hearing tonight is a number of these applications where council is looking at them and saying, well, that, that sounds like it's consistent with policies, so I'm going to support it. And what I'd like to respectfully ask council to consider with, in relation to this application is that this particular property, and I would encourage council to look at it in the context of this particular application and this particular property, is in an epicenter of development. We are surrounded by development. And we were advised by city planners at the beginning of this that we were going to see, what one councillor has referred to as the gentle density, the blending into the existing neighborhoods, downfloping to allow neighborhoods to continue to exist and maintain their character. And I have to tell you, that's not what it feels like on this block. And so, this particular application should be considered within its particular circumstances. On, on our block, behind us, we have all of the development that's happening along King Edward. That is just behind us on the alley. There are some days we can't get out of our garages because we are blocked due to construction for all of the densification that is happening and all the construction that is happening. So, so I would ask council to be very, very cautious of simply applying broad-brush policy without actual analysis of the implications of this particular application. And I would encourage you to consider the undue impact on this street and this neighborhood that this application is potentially and in our view, actually going to engage in terms of the community impact. Thank you.
Thank you, that was perfectly timed. You do have questions? If you could stay on the line, councillor Hardwick.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, your argument is that we should be looking at the particular circumstances at a nuanced level rather than the general statements about increase in density? As I think you called it a broad brush, right?
I did. And I would maybe, I would say, I realize the purposes of a rezoning application may, you know, you may pause at looking at the particular circumstances. But when, once they accumulate, as they have in this particular case, context becomes important. So, if you're applying the policy to, you know, a situation that hasn't had a cluster of densification and construction, perhaps the policy considerations aren't the same as where there hasn't been a cluster. And we are a cluster here.
Well, you are a cluster.
That's our particular circumstance. A cluster of construction.
You spoke about the Camby corridor plan. You said you were involved earlier. You may remember one of the foundational principles as being neighborliness?
Yes.
Does that ring a bell?
It does.
So, here's the core question then. Should council listen to you and your neighbors as existing residents or prioritize people who speculatively might want to move there into, in the future, in a way that, as you've observed, will be increasing density and changing the neighborhood beyond what it is at this point? But I think that's the core question that council's asking, has got to ask itself, because as you observed, we heard from 32 of your neighbors, and then we heard from a bunch of people that, as we've established, are likely working in the industry. So, you're saying we should listen to you as existing residents?
I think what I'm saying is...
Obviously, you are.
Sorry. Well, I think what I'm saying, and I think it's important to understand that, in general, personally, it's not like I'm anti-densification. We would love to have a robust neighborhood and maintain a robust neighborhood. But I think there is a requisite balance that's needed here. And it would be dangerous for a council to just simply go, "Well, that's policy, therefore, yes, rezoning is approved." There is a particular impact with this application, given its location, given the particular characteristics of the property, and given the investment of the neighbors. So, I don't think any of the speakers have come on here and said, "We're against densification. We want to keep families out, new families who want to access the neighborhood out." I mean, that is absolutely not what we are looking for. But we are looking for careful consideration by council for the particular application that's before you.
Thank you, you're very clear, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor Hardwick. And there are no more questions. Thank you so much for speaking to council and answering those questions, very much appreciated.
Thanks for your time.
Are there any other speakers, either in the chamber or on the line?
There are none.
Okay, I'm going to proceed with my calling out for three times, first being this, the first. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Are there any speakers in chambers or on the line, clerk?
No.
Okay, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber? Sorry, are there any speakers in the council chamber or on the line?
No.
Okay, this is my third time. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of this list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. So, we have a five-minute break as we see if anybody joins the line. Okay, council, I'm just going to check with the clerk. I've called out three times. Clerk, are there any speakers to this item on the line or in chambers?
No.
Great. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And since there have been few or no public comments received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing, closing comments, asking further questions of staff and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
My name is Hans Faust. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm the owner of the development company behind this project, and I would just like to acknowledge all the concerns raised by the neighbors and also mention that in September, I did meet with the two neighbors at 191 West 26th to address and discuss the concerns that they had and the concerns represented by their neighbors. So, I have tried my best to show openness to collaboration, and will continue to do so throughout the development or throughout the process as this project moves forward. When the property was purchased a few months ago, the house was in decrepit shape with a leaking roof. It was vacant for a couple of years and rundown and definitely not in line with the beautiful street character that is on 26th today. And I would like to acknowledge that we will be working with our design team to make sure that it fits in according with the beautiful street character that is there today. And so, that's all I would like to share tonight.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Steph, do you have any closing comments?
Staff have no closing comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onto questions to staff then, councillors. Counselor Kirby Young, go ahead, you're first.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I wanted to direct a question to staff following up on a comment we heard from several speakers, and that was about a concern with a potential or possible sinkhole and as well with respect to sort of the potential waterway and impact that might have on the property. Are there identified, can staff provide any perspective or information on that? Are any identified concerns or risks with that, in that regard?
Austin Norrie, senior planner on the line. Thank you, council, for your question. The information I have for this site is the, there is a water course that runs adjacent to the site, and that's the information that I got from engineering. However, the other information that was presented from one of the speakers was that it actually runs into the site. I should mention that engineering has applied a water course covenant onto this application as a condition, which would mean that the applicant would be subject to ensure the health of that water course is maintained during construction period. There also will be a rainwater management plan, as well as a hydrological study at the time of the DP phase, which staff will review those documents, determine the water table and irrigation is maintained as part of the development.
Okay, and if the hydrological study and the other due diligence processes were to reveal any vulnerability or anything that needed to be addressed, just to confirm that that would be a requirement then, as a condition of the application for prior to proceeding with any construction to ensure that there was stability in the area, no undue impact on residents? Is that, is that correct to say?
Correct. If it was determined that additional mitigation to irrigation issues were identified, those could be applied as conditions at the DP stage.
Okay. I'm going to leave it there for now, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Kirby Young. Onto Counselor Weaver questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess a follow-up question. In the document talks about 2.1 under engineering, there's a water course covenant. And I'm assuming that's on title for the duration on the property. And I'm wondering, how large is the water course covenant? And what are the rules and regulations that protect the site?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Weaver. It's Yarden McNeil, Assistant Director of Planning. We're not sure about the scope of the covenant that will be determined at the DP stage. Essentially, what that does, it protects the flow of water as it comes onto the property, as it's diverted through construction, and then it re-hooks up at the point that it leaves that site in order for that water to continue to flow in the way that it always has. That is the requirement of the construction process and for the owner to maintain in perpetuity. Beyond that, we have no other further information at this point.
So, if there's a water course covenant that needs to ensure that the water continuously flows to the property, that means the creek does go through this property. Is that correct?
Yes, it's been determined that there is an underground stream. And so, that covenant will protect the stream from being blocked up through construction. In other words, it can be diverted in some fashion, but it has to be able to flow onto the property and through the property and past the property in perpetuity.
Is there any ability for us to look at opportunities to have that be daylit to the public so that people can see the natural asset of this water course instead of it being diverted?
Yeah, that's a, it's a good question. It comes up a lot in these instances. It has everything to do with how deep the stream is. If it's something that's within generally about a five to 10-foot depth, it can sometimes be daylit on a site without obstructing construction. In this instance, though, it's unlikely. It's, that stream is probably somewhere closer to 20 feet below grade. And in order to daylight that with the ranked banks on either side of it to provide access, you'd end up using too much of the allowable footprint of the site to build on. You couldn't develop the property in that regard. So, what happens with these is simply just to maintain the health of the stream by, through this water course agreement.
Okay, it'd be good to get more information on the water course at this point of the rezonings in the future. The second is 26th is the Park Connector Street. Can you talk about the offsites that will need to be dealt with to ensure that it's continuous to the 26th Avenue Park Connector Street in the public realm planning of the Camby Corridor Plan?
Hi, Counselor Weaver, it's Teen Fan, senior rezoning planner. Thanks for that question. I think that what we do know is that through the engineering conditions, there is a condition for street improvements along West 26th and Columbia. I don't know further details in terms of that connecting directly to the Park Connector, though I'm sure that that's something that we could work through, through the design development stage as well.
Okay. Just, okay, because in the park, in the public realm for the Camby Corridor, there's a dotted green line that goes right in front of this property, but I didn't see that reflected in the report.
Yes, thank you for that important point. I think that it's certainly an element that we would consider, I think, through the review process of the form of development and opportunities to connect to that Park Connector as well. So, we could see that through the future design development stage.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's it for Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Domannato, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Counselor Weaver asked my question about the waterway. I did want to follow up, though, to staff that there was a reference made by one of the residents who called in about, you know, the scope and scale of proposed townhomes and referenced 10 townhomes. And I didn't see that in the report, so could you just clarify that for me in terms of, I appreciate we've got the density framework in here, but is that what's contemplated?
Hi, Counselor Domannato, it's Teen again. The, I couldn't catch that in terms of, is the question related to 10 townhomes on this particular site or 10 townhomes adjacent?
Yes. I heard the residents say it was going to be 10 townhomes on that site.
Certainly, yeah. I think what we can tell you is that this proposal is for a one-lot redevelopment. And through our analysis, we estimate that one lot could deliver some five to six townhomes. So, that's kind of where we're estimating it to be in the future through the form of development. So, I couldn't tell you that it would be 10. I would say that our estimates put us around five to six.
Okay, thank you. I may have misheard the speaker as well, so apologies for that. And then, could you just comment around, generally around tree retention in the area? Because I do see, I believe it's to the north, is that there is a townhome development just off of King Edward? And what we'd be doing around tree retention for this site?
Certainly, Counselor Domannato. For the townhouse rezonings, we always ask for at the future development permit stage an arborist report, as well as a landscape plan. So, we try to look at what currently exists and opportunities to enhance greenery on the site. And the design guidelines are very clear in that we do look to enhance what, opportunities for additional planting and additional trees that surround the site. And that comes in the form of, through courtyards, for example, or front and rear yard landscaping edges.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Domannato, that's it?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Counselor Frye, go ahead. You may be muted. Counselor Frye, we still can't hear you.
How about now?
Yep, that's good.
There we go. I similarly have some, I'm a little confused and have some questions around the stream. Appreciate that the neighbors have pointed, have included the map, the stream map that pretty clearly shows the stream, looks like it would be running through this property. Yardley McNeil confirmed that the stream is running through this property, but the referral report says the rezoning does not contain an old stream, and it's the adjacent property to the east. And so, I'm struggling, I'm confused. How do we get this, these kind of conflicting reports coming out on this? And what does it actually look like if the DP uncovers that there is a waterway here? And given what we've experienced... And given what we've experienced with, just in the last weeks with, you know, cataclysmic, uh, rainwater impacts on, on streams and, and waterways and what we know about climate change. What, what happens in the event that we do discover there is a significant waterway under this site at DP?
Thanks councillor Frye, it's Teen here again, a senior rezoning planner. From when we, when the application came in at the time of staff review, we looked to our van map system to understand if there were natural assets on that site. We were relying on an older van map system. And, um, myself and Austin Norrie both looked at the, um, the natural assets that ran through the, the site. And we discovered that the stream showed that it ran adjacent to this current property to the east. And so that's what we accounted for in the referral report. Engineering has secured and required a water course agreement through a condition, so whether, um, so i- i- it's clear that there is a water course agreement that applies to this site. Um, and that's been secured through an engineering condition. What I would say is that we have recently updated our van map system. And we've introduced new software, um, and more upgraded software, which currently it does reveal that there is an old stream that does run through this site. So that discrepancy, um, has been resolved regardless through the engineering condition that does require that the property owner, um, ensure that the, um, natural asset is um, in, uh, able to be maintained through the, the future development process.
And so when it goes on title, that's, that effectively, um, protects and indemnifies the adjacent property from any incidentals of a diverted waterway that might suddenly move through their property and cause a sinkage or property destruction?
Hi councillor Frye, uh, the, the water course agreement that is secured on title applies only to this site. So it wouldn't apply necessarily to the adjacent site. So it counts for the fact that there is an old stream that does run underneath this current site here.
Right. And so, so this current property that we're talking about would be responsible for that stream. And should it, should the stream change course be, as a result of this development? They would be responsible for that, is what I'm getting at.
Certainly, yeah, it does apply to this particular site and, um, it, it's up to the current property owner. I'm not sure about if the course, if the stream changes course in, um, and runs adjacent to the adjacent property. That might be something that would be applied, um, through a future, future consideration if that property adjacent to it comes forward with a redevelopment. And then probably very similarly, the engineering, uh, group would apply a similar covenant.
Does this development contemplate underground parking or any kind of significant excavation that would get close to the 20 feet?
Um, I think that is an, an analysis that could be done, will be done at the time of development permit where the applicant is expected to meet the parking by law. Um, right now, the design guidelines for the townhouse allow for consideration of, um, surface parking, so parking that does not penetrate below grade. Um, again, we'd have to look at that through the design development stage, but that water course covenant that does apply to that site would still need to be maintained, even if there were requirements for underground parking for this proposal.
Okay, thanks Teen.
Thank you.
Okay, council, um, that is it for your questions. Um, so, uh, I'm looking to somebody to, um, to move this, um, the recommendations here.
I moved councillor De Genova.
Thank you. Uh, secondaire?
Councillor Boyle.
Okay, thank you. We are now into debate. Any councillors wishing to speak, or I'm happy to move us to a vote, if not? Councillor Prime, to the motion.
Yeah, and I am, uh, struggling with this. I, I do appreciate, uh, it's a modest density add at, at 1.2 FSR and, and three stories. And it's, I think, uh, an appropriate built form and housing vernacular. I, I do worry about some of the discrepancy that we're seeing in the, in the, in the, the, the understanding of that underground waterway, although I think, um, I think our staff explanation does give me some comfort that as, as this proceeds to DP, that there will be some thoughtful consideration. And I, and I, and I, and I appreciate that staff are hearing me say this right now and hearing some of the concerns that the other councillors have expressed about this specific site and about the underground waterway, and about the fact that we're hearing conflicting reports that have sort of as yet are unresolved. And, and that we are reeling from the impacts of catastrophic flooding in the Fraser Valley. And we know that climate change is gonna bring more of these kind of incidents and, 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 and the flow of water is a, is a mighty thing. Um, and, and so it, it does leave a lot of questions for me and, and I, and I take the neighbors', uh, acknowledgement of, of the sinkholes around there and looking at it on Google Maps and, and stuff. It does apparently seem like, I've never seen two side-by-side storm grates. Uh, yet apparently there is one on this block right by this stream, so I find that, uh, significant. And, um, and I really, uh, am struggling with this one. I, and I, I wanna put my faith in staff and, and what they've shared with us. But I do wanna really acknowledge that this underground stream thing is, is weighing on my mind and I, I, and it is the, the singular kind of potential deal breaker for me on this. But, uh, thanks for staff's diligence on it nonetheless.
Uh, thanks councillor Frye. Councillor Weaver, to the motion.
Yeah, I'm also concerned about the engineered water course. And currently with what we're seeing with flash floods and climate change in the city of Vancouver, we are really struggling in certain neighborhoods with our water table. And this is a great opportunity to create a natural engineered water structure that could really help, um, with a lot of the density and ensuring that we are collecting the water appropriately. And so, um, I as well, uh, trust staff that we could work through the DP phase to find a way to create an engineered asset here, um, that we can divert as much water from this neighborhood through this process, recognizing this is a green street. Um, a park connector, so there might be an ability to wrap around this property or look at different options to create an engineered water course, um, to showcase the stream and continue to build as we look at opportunities around the city to improve our natural infrastructure, to collect our rainwater as part of the Rain City Strategy. So I look at this as an opportunity and I hope staff recognize that as they go through the next phase.
Thank you councillor Weaver. Councillor, councillor Kirby Young, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'll reflect and reiterate the concern with respects to the water feature in that. I mean, I think it's very top of mind for everybody right now, given what's happening in BC. Um, but I think as well as prior to the emergent, uh, emergency situation that we have, um, with respect to work around really recognizing the natural water features. So, um, while I have hesitation about that, I do believe that any significant issues will come to light through the requirements that are being placed as a result of the covenant and the different studies that have to be conducted. And I'll, I'll just say clearly, I think that that's a risk that the applicant is taking that may impact how that, that could be built upon, may impact the financial viability around the site, et cetera. Because if there are, um, sort of more fulsome issues that are discovered, they will need to have to be addressed and mitigated before it can move forward. So, you know, from that perspective, I'm looking at it in a similar, um, way that I'm flagging the concern, but I'm also putting confidence in the fact that the issues will need to be addressed, um, before building could be proceeded with and we could not proceed with putting something in place that we did not think would be resilient and respect the continued flow, um, of, of the waterway through the site. So that's one of the primary concerns that I had there. I did appreciate, um, that the comments from neighbors with respect to what people love about their neighborhood. Um, that's part of what makes Vancouver unique is the distinct character of the different neighborhoods. I also appreciated the comment from the applicant with respect to the fact that they heard and acknowledged that. And we're looking to, seeking to provide a design that, um, would be respectful and, um, complimentary, um, of that character in the neighborhood. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thanks councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Domonado?
Uh, thanks Chair, and, um, a couple of additional thoughts on this. I, um, listening intently to, uh, the number of speakers who called in on this and, and reviewing the correspondence we had. And um, admittedly, I'm, I'm a bit conflicted on this one and, and it stems from a couple of places. Um, one, I was gonna raise questions around the natural waterway, but, uh, it was addressed by a couple of my colleagues in advance. And, um, I, I'm wrestling a little bit with the information that we have before us. I appreciate that staff have, uh, clarified that uh, appropriate due diligence will be undertaken before any kind of development can take place. Uh, so that's important from my perspective. Um, and I appreciate it was pointed out, there was some conflicting information that we were receiving during this meeting. And, uh, that staff clarified that for us, but it certainly has stood out. And I appreciate that a number of the residents raised that in, in their comments. Um, the second part of where my hesitation lies is around, um, the, the general conversation and points that residents raised about the change in the neighborhood, but that we've gotten to a place where, um, there seemed to be a, a lack of awareness that there was potential for, uh, townhomes in this area. And, and, and this is something that, um, we've heard very clearly from, uh, the public is that we need to be, um, adding this gentle density. We've been talking, uh, at length about the importance of missing middle. And I, I've seen examples of it, uh, throughout the city, uh, mixed in with, uh, similar, um, neighborhoods, uh, single detached homes. A, a lot of pre-work was done in the, in the context, uh, with the developer, with the neighborhood and, and the residents and engaging them. And then so I think that may have contributed in part, um, to the success of those rezonings. I appreciated that the applicant spoke up towards the end there to sort of clarify that they were hearing, um, uh, the, the neighbors' concerns about the fit with the neighborhood and the context. Uh, and so just to acknowledge that, but if, uh, I am a little surprised admittedly, uh, with this particular one that we've gotten to such a stage and, and there doesn't seem to be, uh, as much support from the, the near neighbors. Um, and, and I, and so, and but on the flip side, we also had a number of residents write in, uh, saying that yes, we do need to embrace this and we need to have, uh, a different type of tenure and, and housing options for residents, uh, uh, and a detached home is completely out of reach for them. And so this provides more choices. And so that's certainly something I'm weighing in my mind this evening. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that there was a number of pieces of information that came up through the meeting. I, I appreciated the comments from our residents, but also from the applicant and, and the architect, uh, at the beginning. So thank you for that.
Thanks councillor Domonado. Councillor Hardwick?
Well, I guess the answer to the question that I asked one of, uh, one of the speakers, should council listen to you as an existing resident or to, or prioritize people who speculative might wanna move here over time in the future? Um, I think we're, we're just about to answer that question. Um, to me, the larger issues remain around land inflation through the precipitous rezoning that has been undertaken here. Um, but, uh, we continue down this path. Uh, so, you know, all of the other issues, uh, that have been brought up about the nuance of the individual neighborhood, the proximity to, to neighbors and, and the issues are, are around the stream features and, and our concerns about o- ongoing concerns regarding climate change that, um, I guess, we'll see what happens with, with the water and the streams in this area, next deluge that we've got coming up in the next little while. Anyhow, I just, it, it, it will continue to see these and they'll continue to get passed, but I'm not gonna support it.
Okay, thanks councillor Hardwick. Um, we, um, have no other speakers on the list, so, um, Madam Clerk, if you, uh, sorry, clerk, if you could move us to a vote on this, that would be good, thank you. Okay, um, that, that does pass with, uh, two in opposition, councillors Swanson and Hardwick. Okay, um. Okay, that moves us on to, um, item number eight on our list. Um, so I just wanted to inform you that we actually have, um, according to the clerk, no other, um, speakers on the line at this point. And, um, uh, that means it may be possible for us to finish, but only if we extend, um, to, uh, extend this meeting. Uh, and so I don't know if anybody's interested in doing that, but, um, the backup date otherwise would be December 15th, I believe.
I just have procedure.
Point of procedure. Go ahead councillor De Genova.
My point of procedure is, uh, the meeting would have to be on December 15th for the backup date here.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yep, I just said that, okay. Councillor Boyle?
Uh, yes, I'd like to move to, um, extend to finish the remainder of the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second here for that?
Councillor Domonado.
Great, um, okay. And I'm just gonna ask for yeas and nays. At this point, all those in favor say yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Aye. Any opposed say nay? Okay, we're extending to finish the business. Thanks council. Um, it was unanimous. And, uh, we are now, um, dealing with, um, the referral point report eight. And, uh, as I, um, and so I'm gonna first ask if, sorry. Um, if, uh, the clerk could read the application summary of correspondence, please?
This is an application by graduate architecture to rezon 608 to 632 West 54th Avenue from single detached houses in duplexes district to multiple dwelling district. To permit townhouse development for maximum force space ratio 1.2. If rezonings approved, as a subsequent development permit process will entail review of a proposed form of development. General manager of planning urban design sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5pm today.
Thanks very much. I just wondered if any, a member of conflict, uh, sorry, can, any member of council wishes to declare conflicts of interest on this item? Seeing now, uh, none. Um, I'm just gonna read, uh, the first request for speakers. Any speakers, please, uh, call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. Um, we have Austin Norrie, rezoning planner, uh, rezoning center planning urban design and sustainability here to present the application. We want, if we don't wanna hear it, we need a motion to, um, waive presentation.
Move to waive the presentation?
Uh, that sounds like councillor Kirby Young.
Second, Domonado.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Great, thank you. Um, Steph, we've moved that, uh, the, uh, presentation is the applicant team here to speak to the application.
Uh, this is Ying Guan here, the architect.
Yes, are you, are you going to speak or be available for questions?
No, I'm available at present.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Um, council, do you have any questions to staff or the applicant team? I am not seeing any. So we are now gonna turn to hear from the public. Um, if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to, uh, council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Any, so, uh, clerk, could you just confirm if there are any speakers in chambers or on the line?
No.
So my, great, okay, I'm going, uh, somebody's not muted and is speaking, just, uh, uh, council, if you could watch that, please. I'm gonna call three more times then. If there are any additional speakers for this item to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of this list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers, um, either on the line or in chambers?
Just checking, and no.
Okay, I am going to call, uh, two more times. If there are any additional speakers for this item to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 80470 pound before the close of this list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Clerk, any speakers in chambers or on the line?
No.
Okay, third time. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1- If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of this list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. A five minute break, counsel, as we wait to see if anybody does call.
The council is currently on a short recess. If anyone currently on the line.
Counselor DeGenova, but I can't be on video right now.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, Clerk, I think I see that we have four now.
Yes, you can. It's over to you, Chair Carr.
Okay, counsel, and clerk, if you could just let me know if there's any other speakers on the line or in chambers to this item?
No.
Great, I'm seeing there are no additional speakers. The speakers list is now closed. And as few or no public comments were received on the site of after five P M. today, I suggest we not close the seat of public comments. Move on to hearing closing comments, asking for the questions of staff and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No.
Great, thank you. Staff, do you have any further closing comments?
Staff have no closing comments, thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm seeing no one on the list, counsel, and it's now time to make a decision. Do we have a mover?
For being.
Thank you, Secorder.
Counselor Boyle.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no one on the list, so counsel, I'm going to ask clerk to move up to a vote, please. Counsel, we, if you haven't yet voted. Okay, that passes with Councillors Swanson and Counselor Hardwick in opposition. And that takes us to the end of that item. Thank you very much, counsel. We're now moving on to item nine on the agenda. Item nine is the rezoning for seven oh seven west twenty seventh avenue. Does any member of council wish to declare conflicts of interest on this? I'm seeing no one on the list. Clerk, could you please read the summary and, sorry, read the application summary of correspondence?
There's an application by P Square Engineering and Construction Limited to be zone seven oh seven west twenty seventh avenue. From single detached houses and duplexes district to multiple dwelling district. You permit townhouse development for maximum for space ratio one point two. If rezonings approved, as subsequent development permit process will until reveal proposed form of development. General manager planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set on the summary and recommendations of the public hearing agenda. No correspondence has been received from this application since we refer to public hearing.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any speakers for this item wishing to speak to counsel, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. This phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. With Austin Norrie, rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning urban design and sustainability here to present the application. I note there are no speakers to this item, counsel, at this point. You can move to waive this presentation if you wish.
Move to waive the presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Frye. And that was second, was it Counselor Boyle?
The Boyle, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of waiving this presentation, say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Great, thank you. Thank you, staff, but no need for that. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application? Is the applicant team here?
Payman will be here in a second. He just got logged out accidentally. He'll be coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, is Payman Seany on the line yet? Or was that Brian Billingley who spoke earlier? Are you prepared to?
That's right, it's Brian. I'm just waiting for Payman, but maybe we just proceed anyways. I think it's fine.
Okay, so, okay, that's fine. That's great.
Yeah, I don't want to delay you guys. It's late.
I appreciate that. Maybe questions to you. Counsel can ask questions, obviously, to the applicant or to staff. Counsel, do you have any questions? I am not seeing any. So we are now moving to hearing from the public on this item. If there are any questions, sorry, speakers of this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Followed by the participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. This phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers online or in council chamber?
No.
Great, okay, at this point, I am going to do three calls. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish, I wish I was a robot, actually. Who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers in council chambers or on the line?
No.
Okay, my second call. If there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll free eight one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of this list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber online, clerk?
No.
Thank you. This is my third and final call. If there are any additional speakers for this item wishing to speak to counsel, please call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero. Followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of this list. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream, and we are going to take a five minute break to see if anyone does come on the line. Five minutes, everyone. Seeing that there are no additional speakers to this item, that speakers list is now closed and as few or.
Sorry, Chair Carr, there. And we did get a speaker.
I am so sorry. Are there any speakers to this item, either online or in chambers?
Yes, there is a speaker online.
Oh.
Hi. Hi, it's me again, Naomi Steinberg. As forewarned, I'm I'm on the agenda for seven five six west twenty six, one nine seven west twenty seven. This one as well, seven oh seven west twenty seven. All under the Canby Corridor Plan, so as we've heard, given the scale and rate of change. Contact is important. It's not just a singular property, it's all of them, which is part of why we're doing our rezoning streamlining. The trees here are significant. We're near the hospital, is near the rehab, G F Strong rehab. These are all people who need rest and respite and quiet, not decades of jackhammering. So I urge you again to be careful what precedence you set as you proceed with your deliberations, your rezonings and your streamlining. We heard that we need a more robust analysis of the implications of application. When the rate of change is so rapid and there may not be enough G I S or geotech data. When we've heard concerns expressed by Counselor Frye regarding inconsistent information regarding streams. And from Counselor Weave regarding the green dotted line in the Canby Corridor Public Realm Plan. What assurances do we have on this site that developers and staff have or can do their due diligence? We all agree that the climate crisis, topography and hydrology don't contain themselves to a single water course covenant. Or in fact, a single watershed. So again, I'm curious to know where we go in terms of policy and procedure with our comprehensive redevelopment zones. The lived experience at times feels tragic, at times feels overwhelming, at times feels like the most backwards thing in terms of local economics. But I leave that to all the experts that you have on staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time and and speaking very clearly on a number of issues tonight. I really appreciate that. There are no questions for you, but again, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, so at this point, that that is, I should ask again, are there any other further speakers on the line, clerk?
No more speakers.
Okay, so as few or no public comments have been received on the site after five P M. today, I suggest we now close the seat of public comments. And move on to hearing closing comments, asking for the questions of staff and to make a decision. And does the applicant have any closing comments?
Uh, no closing comments.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
Uh, staff have no closing comments, thank you.
Okay, counsel, I don't, I don't see any of you on the list for questions. In that case, oh, wait, Counselor Weave, go ahead with questions. In that case, um, oh, wait, councillor Weave, go ahead with questions.
Yeah, one last time, I'm going to ask this to see if I can get a clear answer. The square footage of seventy-six fifty-three, which is the rezoning that we're putting in front of us right now, and the base zoning was forty-four six-four, which is three-one-eight-nine, times the fifty-five dollars per square foot, is larger than the amount in the report. Can we please have a, a review and let me know why these numbers are not consistent? It's been every report today and there's just been, it's not a lot of money. Um, but in every report, it's a little bit of funding that could really go to build community amenities. So can I just get a clarification that, um, the numbers I have that I'm doing are incorrect?
Hi, councillor. Thanks for that question, councillor Weave. I'm just looking at the, uh, public benefit summary here and just to make sure that we are calculating it according to the policy. So what we're doing is we're taking seven-six-five-three, which is the proposed zoning, and we're minusing four-seven-eight-three.
Why are we not, if you look at the, by last page, the permitted under current zoning is the four-four-six-four, so why are we doing the proposed zoning base density of point seven-five? When I was told in an earlier report that we're going off the point seven. So why are we going after the point seven as an already, as an RM eight A and not off the point seven?
Yes, uh, it's a, it's a great question and I think when we looked back to the density bonus zone policy, there is a table in that policy and it outlines the, the base density and then the proposed zoning density. And in that policy, it says zero point seven-five to one point two-zero. So that's how we're applying it, uh, currently. And if, if we, uh, said zero point seven-zero, it probably was, um, sort of a, an error on staff's part. But when we look to, to confirming the policy, that's where we arrived at in terms of how we do that calculation.
Okay, in this report, it shows the DBZ bulletin and when you look at that, I don't see that as the confirmed policy. So is there an element in that DBL, DBZ bulletin that I'm missing that showcases that it should be under the point seven-five?
Certainly, let me have a quick.
It's on page thirteen, which shows the Canby Corridor, it's just a picture, so I don't see. So it says the dense, the contribution rates go from the RM eight A if you're going, and I see that element of it, the point seven-five. Fifty-five dot two oh, so that's on the density motion contribution rates. But how are we not collecting a CAC off going from the original zoning to an RM eight A?
Sorry, can I hear just apologies councillor Weave, can you just repeat that question, I think I missed it.
Okay, when you go to the density, the bulletin for density bonus zoning in public benefits, it does say it goes from a point seven-five to one point two and it goes from Canby Corridor when it's, when the zoning district is an RM eight A. This current proposal in front of us currently isn't at that level. It's not an RM, it's currently zoned RS one.
Right, right, so.
So why, why are we only getting the development contribution from the proposed zoning and not the current zoning? What, where's the gap on that point seven to point seven-five?
Certainly. Yeah, it, sorry to interrupt, I, I think it's a, it's a really great question. Um, I think, um, you know, it, it's something that we really are reevaluating in terms of what's come up today and why that was set at zero point seven-five and not set at zero point seven-zero. Um, and I think what we can say is that we do really stick to the policy and if the policy is saying zero point seven-five, not zero point seven-zero, which is the current RS one zoning and the permitted FSR, then it's something that we will definitely take away, recognizing there could be some discrepancy here. And I think we would have to go back to our, our colleagues over in the, the plan group to make sure that we are calculating it appropriately. What I would say is that because the density bonus zone contribution is based on, um, development permit drawings and collected at the BP stage, um, these numbers are always very much an estimate. So it, it, while it appears in the report as a hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty, when we collect it, it, it might change and fluctuate depending on what we actually see as coming through in the, uh, development permit drawings.
And councillor Weave is well over time. So I'm sorry, then we should have to cut that off at, at this point. And I'm not seeing any other questions, um, from councillors at this point.
Happy to move the motion, councillor De Genova.
Um. Right, sorry.
Second councillor Domnado.
Staff recommendation.
Yeah, just one second, um. I thought I had already a mover for this, I'm sorry, but I guess I don't. Sorry, I'm, I'm clerk, did we not get a mover already on this? I'm sorry, I seem to have made it, made a note that, on that, but.
Um, it, it is the clerk here, yes, we, we are moving into the vote with the, with the, the motion, or I'm sorry, moving into debate now, Chair Carter?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but they're, they're, okay, so I'm sorry, I did not capture the mover, um, I'm second on that, my apologies.
Oh, sorry, it was, um, I, if I got it right, it was councillor De Genova? And I'm sorry, I didn't catch who the seconder was.
Domnado.
I'm sorry, I did miss that as well, okay. And councillor De Genova, turn the motion.
No, I just didn't know if you needed me to move it, so I put myself.
Okay, okay, the clerk captured that, sorry, that's, it's all good. Uh, then I guess we can be moved to, uh, vote on this, councillor, uh, sorry, clerk, please.
Sorry, it must be getting late, are you ready for the vote, is that what you said?
Yeah, I think, I just said that, sorry, it is getting a bit late. I were moving a bit quickly, go ahead.
Here we go.
Okay, so that, um, that vote passes with councillor Swanson and Hardwick in opposition. Okay, thank you. We are now, um, moving into, uh, the last item on the agenda. Uh, rezoning one-five-seven-one-six-three, uh, West King Edward. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on number ten? Item ten. No, seeing none. Clerk, could you please read the application, summary of correspondence received?
It's an application by Form Development to reason one-five-seven to one-sixty-three West King Edward Avenue from single detached houses in duplex district to multiple dwelling district to permit townhouse development with maximum force base ratio one point two. If rezoning is approved, a subsequent development permit process will include review of proposed form of development. General manager planning urban design sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation to public hearing agenda. All correspondence has been received on this application since we flow to public hearing.
Great, thank you. Um, so, um, I'm just, for my first time, any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registration speakers list. We don't have anybody on that list right now, but there we go. We have Austin Norrie, our rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning urban design and sustainability here to present the application. Um, so there will be presentation unless it's moved to wave. Council? Do you want to hear the application? Presentation?
Move to wave. Second.
Second, Domnado.
Okay, was that councillor Boyle moved and councillor Domnado seconded? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those who say nay? Great, we are now, um, moving that presentation. Um, is the application, sorry, applicant team here to speak to this application?
Uh, yes, we are.
Great. Go ahead.
Don't, uh, we, we will wait for questions, but I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for council, for their dedication to and commitment to finishing the agenda, thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, councillors, you, um, there are questions you could ask to either the, uh, staff or to the, um, applicant team. I'm at this point not seeing any. So we will now hear from the public. If there are any speakers to this item wishing to speak to council, please call toll free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers in the council chamber or online to this item?
Yes, we have a speaker at the chamber podium.
Oh, that's great. Um, okay, and the, um, well, I'll guess that person can, at this point, approach and just make sure that you state your name and whether or not you are a resident of the city of Vancouver.
Good evening councillors, although it's past my bedtime, I'm very patient, listening to all these things that you guys are talking about, the other applications that are out there, a few things that I was pretty interested in and was about the one stream that's running.
So, excuse me, speaker, could you please state your name?
My name is, my name is Jack Sandu and I live directly in between the two sites that this developer is, uh, proposing. Uh, so I want seven-five West King Edward.
Great, thank you.
And, uh, so, uh, I, I'm here today, um, for a few reasons. Uh, one is, uh, I was never ever approached, my wife and I, with a contract to purchase and sell an offer from these developers to purchase our property and, uh, and besides that, um, my concern is today is if, am I able to do my own development is what I want to know. Moving forward.
This is, this is not a, a time when you can actually ask questions, you can make a statement regarding this development. Um, but I would encourage you to contact our staff at the city to ask that question after the public hearing. Or you're there in person right now, I suppose, if they are in chambers, you could ask them after, at the end of this, but it's not, it's not the opportunity to ask that question, just to make comment on the current application.
Sure, um, I'm not here, I'm, I'm here, I support their development, what they're doing, that's fine. Um, even though they didn't approach us, that, that's fair enough. But my main concern and my wife's main concern is if we're able to do our own development down the line and, uh, if we still fall into the criteria of the Canby Corridor Phase Three and have their density up to one point two FSR and which I could talk to the, the staffers here afterwards, as you say. And, uh, and then, uh, just, just interesting thing is councillor Weave there, he's talking about the five million thing, everything's time for five million, that's, you know, I never heard anything like that on our block at all. So just sitting here all night, listening to that, is, you know, I was wondering where that came from. And, uh, secondly, I just hope that stream that you guys are talking about on one-nine-seven doesn't veer off to, into my property also, right?
Right, right. Okay, um, um, that's it for your comments?
Uh, but, no, um, I'm just gonna go back into, um, talking about these townhomes, right? We had, I was involved in this Canby Corridor Phase Three, uh, from the beginning. Uh, we worked it and I had eleven houses on both sides of one hundred block of West King Edward, all, all ready to do high density. And the city kind of refused us from having the phase-two development density. And I still believe, as I stated before, up on the podium here before, that this townhouse development on major roads doesn't work. And, uh, you still go there, I, I was out at a friend's place for Halloween and all the realm and stuff like that, where they show all the kids are running around trick-or-treating and everything. Uh, it, it's not, it's not there. Uh, nobody seems to use their front door on a major arterial road. Right, you don't, you don't see no welcome mats, you don't see no coffee tables there. They, all they do is just use their underground parking, that's it. On no street, on Oak, Granville, you look at King Ed, King Edward, wherever all these townhouses are, are, nobody uses their front doors at all. And, uh, I, and I, I stated before with the city staffers that, uh, you know, these, these, uh, townhouses should be in the inner, inner blocks where neighbors know each other, everybody knows each other, they feel free to open their door. On major roads, nobody knows the people who live across the street or anything like that, there's, the community's not there, is they're separated. So, uh, I, I would like to see that, uh, that we sit down with the city and see what we can do with this. We had all, all these people ready for higher density. And, uh, I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you so much, um, and that is perfectly timed. Um, you don't have any questions, but very much appreciate not only you speaking to council, but the fact that you've come in to speak to council, thank you so much. And so, uh, council, um, or staff, I'm just gonna ask if there's any other speakers, either in chambers or on the line?
No speakers.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to ask, I'm going to do the call three times, uh, for this. Um, starting with, uh, my first call, if there are any other additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Clerk, are there any other speakers in chambers or on the line?
No.
Okay, um, my second call, if there are any other additional speakers for this item wishing to speak to council, please call toll free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Clerk, any speakers in chambers or on the line?
No.
Third and final time, uh, if, if there are any additional speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by participant code eight oh four seven zero pound before the close of the speakers list. That phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. And we are in a five-minute break, council.
The ongoing flipping, assembling and disassembling in my neighborhood makes it clear that not many more people than the realtors are winning. Gentle density could be built without increased time or money costs pushed onto local developers or single detached owners wishing to infill. Regarding financial viability, it's hard, there are supply chain issues, there has been a pine beetle, there have been fires. These are um, all good reasons to make more than abatement mandatory. Use these opportunities to divert from the waste stream to salvage, use your power and influence wisely, encourage developers to partner not just with demo companies, but with deconstructors, come back into line with being um, with greenest city and Vancouver Plan aspirations. I don't always know what jargon to use or comprehend statistics, but I do know that housing is not a product um, to be sold um, and to make a mad profit on. The side blocks of the Camby Corridor have, are already filing, um, falling, we're in a cluster of clusters. And um, the so-called secured rentals are often still managed by savvy investors. We do need to dampen speculation and create complete communities. We can capture the land value in ways that sustain and increase over generations through amenities that include nature assets. Please, I urge you to, to proceed so carefully and to, to use all of, um, yeah, all of your wisdom connected to these beautiful lands, thank you.
Thank you very much um, for um, speaking on, on this item and so clearly about it. Uh, there are no questions for you, but again, very much appreciate you staying um, late to call in. Uh, so council, um, we are um, uh, at the point of no more speakers, so I'm going to um, close the speakers list. And as few or no public comments were received on, oh, actually, I should check, clerk, were, were there any other people that called in on this item?
No.
Okay, thanks, so I'm closing the speakers list, and as few or no public comments were received on the site after five PM, I suggest we now close the receipt of public con, comments and move on to hearing closing comments. Further questions to staff and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Sorry, no, no, no closing comments.
Okay, thank you very much, staff, do you have any closing comments?
Uh, staff have no closing comments, thanks, thank you.
Great, okay, and um, council, do you have any questions to staff? I'm not seeing anybody on the list, so we are now looking to make a decision, is somebody prepared to move the recommendations?
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Domnado.
Councillor DeGenova.
Seconded by councillor DeGenova. Um, we are now into debate. I'm not seeing anybody on the list to do that. So council, I feel like I can just ask the clerk to move us to a decision place. Uh, councillor Domnado, we have it, yeah, okay, um, so that, um, that does carry with two in opposition, councillor Swanson and councillor Hardwick. Um, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, um, that is exactly what is next on the agenda, so um, this, uh, I'm hearing a second in all his favor. I'll, um, sorry, did you catch that, I think it was Currie Young in, in, that moved it, and councillor DeGenova seconding it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
That has carried unanimously, this meeting is now adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, council.
Good night, everybody. Thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Staff for staying extra late.
Yeah, we really appreciate that.
At all.